To call the roll so we can make sure we have a forum of commissioners present. Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will begin with Commissioner Candelaria.
Here.
Commissioner Sirtin.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Dominguez.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Uh huh.
Commissioner McWilliams.
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Musserafi. Commissioner Musserafi. Commissioner Patton.
Here.
Commissioner Rader.
Here.
Commissioner Cypher.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Timmons.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Madam Chair Pruitt.
I am here.
And let me ask again, Commissioner Musserafi. Okay, Madam Chair, I believe you have a forum.
Thank you, Pam. Um, can... I hope we also have our counsel, Robert Sanchez, with Attorney General's Office. Mr. Sanchez, are you on today? Hmm. Okay. Well, luckily, we not only have the new Commission Administrator, Pam Jones. Please wave, Pam. I've introduced Ms. Jones to the commissioners by email. Now, I'm introducing her to the rest of the world. She started with us a couple of weeks ago. She has jumped in with both feet, and I'm very excited that we have filled this position with someone of Ms. Jones' experience. And we now expect we can continue. We're rocking and rolling along for the Water Quality Control Commission. We always also have with us today NMD staff, Melina Ortiz and Alan Pura, who have been filling in, uh, in the many board commission roles since Cody Barnes left us in July. And I want to acknowledge all their hard work and thank them so much for what they've done during this transition time. Since we have you all on the line, maybe one of you could reach out to Commissioner Musserafi and Counsel Sanchez and see if perhaps they're having trouble getting into the meeting. Um, or, you know, they might need some extra assistance. Um, I have a little script. I'm gonna start. Yes. Is that Commissioner Dominguez? Who is trying to speak?
Madam Chair.
Yes, please identify yourself.
Madam Chair, this is Gabriel Wade. That is Counsel Sanchez, who is trying to speak. I...
Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor Sanchez. Uh, we cannot hear you.
There.
Oh, you're just kind of coming in in a very spotty way, Mr. Sanchez. Keep trying. You can call in by phone, Mr. Sanchez. There is a phone number in the invite.
No. This is Counsel Sanchez. This is Commissioner Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez, you are breaking up so badly. I really can't understand what you're saying. I see your little microphone comes on and it highlights the square where your name is, but I'm not really able to see or hear you. And I don't mind not having the video, but we do need to be able to hear your voice. You might want to try to call in on the phone number for the meeting and see if that works a little bit better. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read my introduction and go through my protocol script for this meeting. Counsel Sanchez has heard this before and helped put this together. And I'll check in again at the end to see if we've been able to get him and his voice into our meeting. So, as you all know, today is a virtual meeting being conducted through the WebEx platform because of the continuing COVID-19 epidemic in New Mexico and the resulting public health orders and guidelines. Still, this is a public meeting. It is being conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, which is New Mexico Statute Sections 10-15-1 to 4. The open or public portion of this meeting, which we're in right now, is being recorded as it would normally be. The closed session, if the commission goes into one, will not be open to the public and will not be recorded. Therefore, it will not be available for public review. Matters discussed in the closed session will be limited only to those specified in the motion closure. And any action and votes on those matters will be taken in open session. And commissioners, please note that that second WebEx session for our executive session, if we need it, is not activated now and will not be activated unless and until we take a vote to go into closed session. So you don't need to try to sign in to that one in advance or be in two things at one time. We have established a special protocol for commission members and public participation in this meeting. We ask that as a courtesy to our commission members and to all others listening on the phone who may not be able to see the video of everyone or may not recognize voices, please, whenever you speak, identify yourselves and who you are. And that must be clearly audible to all commission members and to the public. Commission members, attorneys, and everybody else, please remember to avoid speaking over one another. We can only hear one microphone at a time. And all votes of commission members during this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote because it's not practical on the WebEx platform to do a show of hands or just a voice vote. As Commission Chair, I will suspend the meeting if there is a break or interruption in the audio/video and then we'll all have to try to come in and get back into the meeting. Uh, on our meeting invitation, and which is also the agenda on our website, if anyone has any trouble with the platform, we have an IT staff member from the Environment Department, Lori Gasta, who's at the ready during the meeting to assist anyone. And Alan Pura is available as well. So you can call those numbers. And if you can't see them on the screen or get into the meeting, those are on our website with the agenda for today's meeting. So if and when the commission moves into closed session, uh, the public meeting and all the telephone lines will remain open, but attendees will remain muted. And attendees can stay in this current platform public meeting during the commission's closed session. Commission members will return to the open public portion of the meeting once the closed session is completed. And commission staff will post notes, you know, a little sign on the screen there showing the anticipated time that any closed session or any break will end. Although, please understand that these are only estimates. And, but we just want to try to give everybody an idea of how, you know, whether we're on an hour lunch break scheduled to end at 1:15 or whether we're on a 10-minute step away from your computer screen break or something like that to try to make it as easy as possible for everyone to know what's going on and to participate. Now, I'm gonna mute myself and see if any of the Commissioner NMD staff want to add anything about meeting logistics to what I just said. So Alan, uh, Melina, or Pam, any of you have anything to add? This is the time.
Nothing, nothing from us, Madam Chair.
Nothing from me, Madam Chair. I think we're, uh, we're ready to move on.
Okay, thank you very much. So then, uh, let's check in again about whether we have Mr. Sanchez, uh, on audio or in the meeting at this point. Commissioner Timmons, please.
Chairman Pruitt.
Yes.
This is Counsel Sanchez. Can you hear anything?
Why, it's very shaky, Mr. Sanchez.
Are you able to hear me?
Um, it breaks up a little bit, but I'm hearing you better than I did before. Alan, can you please stop sharing your screen so I can see more of the participants, please? Mr. Sanchez, will you try speaking a couple of sentences, please, so we can see? Uh, really try to see if we can hear you.
Madam Chair, this is Howard. Uh, his microphone is muted.
I see that. Mr. Sanchez, your microphone is muted. I'm not sure if you're aware of that because we're not hearing anything from you. Uh, it looks like there's a little problem triangle exclamation point in your box, Mr. Sanchez. I don't know that you're connected. Okay, uh, I'm gonna try the first couple items on the agenda, which I don't really think need much legal advice or assistance. That would be the approval of the agenda and the approval of meeting minutes from our June meeting. Uh, we'll try and have Mr. Sanchez work with his AGO Attorney General Office IT staff, see if he can get a better connection to us. Um, so, um, the agenda was, final agenda was sent out. Everybody and posted on Friday and to entertain a motion and second to approve today's agenda.
Madam Chair, Howard has consented. I move a people on the agenda.
Madam Chair, this is Gabriel Wade. I will second that motion.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote for us on approval of the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Beginning now. Commissioner Candelaria.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirtin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez.
Yes, but I do have a question.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, there's been discussion about, uh, going into executive session. And maybe I just haven't seen the most recent draft agenda, particularly if the commission's going into executive session that is actually listed on the agenda. Um, just wanting to make sure that we did not put that out of the open.
Okay. Well, I'll just mention in the middle here of our roll call vote that the final agenda that was sent out on Friday, and I checked this morning and is posted on our website, does state in several different places for several different agenda items that the commission may go, uh, into executive session to discuss. Not the most recent one because we also added, uh... We need the Friday one, Alan, that had the executive session language for all the settlement agreements and the hearing. Then it's the last on the agenda item.
Madam Chair, uh, let me get Dominguez. When I checked the website this morning, uh, one listed there did not list any, anything with executive session. So maybe it just didn't get posted to the website.
Okay, we'll take a pause in the middle of our roll call vote and check this out, please.
Okay, continuing. Commissioner Hutchinson.
No, Pam. We're gonna take a pause and look at the agenda. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, you're right. Uh, Commissioner Dominguez, it does not appear that we posted the correct final agenda with the executive session language on it. There it is. I don't know where you got that one, Alan. Could you elucidate for us, please?
Uh, this one I got from our shared drive folder of Let Me Use the Website and see if this has been posted in, uh, the multiple places we post the agenda.
Good morning, this is Commissioner Musserafi.
Good morning, Commissioner Musserafi. I'm so glad you're able to join us. Um, we've gone through a little description of today's meeting, how to use WebEx. We are reviewing the agenda on our website to determine which version was posted and whether it, uh, it has our language on the potential of going into executive session. So we're kind of on a little hold here. Uh, do we have Counsel Sanchez on the line? Have you gotten the way to join us, Mr. Sanchez?
Deputy Secretary, pardon me, Chair Pruitt, this is Jennifer Howard, General Counsel of the New Mexico Environment Department. I was able to contact Attorney General's Office, and they are going to assist him in joining the meeting. But Ms. Malave said that you all may continue, um, until he's able to do so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And that's my plan. Thank you. Uh, first, we're gonna take a couple of minutes and see if we can figure out this agenda situation.
Madam Chair, this is Alan. And indeed, uh, the agendas that are posted to the website are the prior version before the language, uh, was put in about potentially going into executive session. We do have that agenda finished and completed. Uh, I can post that if it's, uh, if it's okay for the commission to be looking at that agenda on the screen as you contemplate, um, approving the agenda. I will stand by for further instructions, and I will pull that, uh, agenda off that has the proper language.
Um, I, I think we should go ahead and proceed with our roll call vote on the agenda that was on the website. That was what, according to the Open Meetings Act, was made available to the public and to the commissioners three days before our meeting. That's a requirement under the Open Meetings Act. Uh, I don't know that we can change that now. But we will have to wait and discuss that matter with counsel. So, in the meantime, uh, let's just start over with a roll call vote on approval of the agenda as it was, final agenda was posted on Friday without language on executive session. So let's just start the roll call vote over again, Lieutenant. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Beginning to approval of the agenda. Commissioner Candelaria.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirtin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams.
Yes.
Commissioner Musserafi.
Yes.
Commissioner Patton.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader. Yes, Commissioner, uh, thank you. Commissioner Cypher.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes, and Madam Chair, to clarify, um, by voting yes, does that mean that under this agenda, there would be no executive session at this moment? And so we clarify?
At this moment, you are correct. We will discuss with counsel when and if he becomes available, whether we can do that in spite of the fact that this was not on the agenda.
And, and Madam Chair, your vote?
My vote is yes.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're gonna move to the second item on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes for our, um, last meeting way back on, I believe it was June 6th, uh, June 9th. I, uh, I did not have any, anything, but I will need a motion and second to approve the meeting minutes.
Madam Chair, Howard Hutchinson moved to approve the minutes. And by the way, they were very well done.
Madam Chair, Gabriel Wade, I would second that motion.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Hutchinson. Um, Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote for us on approval of the minutes?
Yes, ma'am. Beginning. Commissioner Candelaria.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirtin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams.
Yes.
Commissioner Musserafi.
Yes.
Commissioner Patton. Commissioner Patton.
Yes.
Thank you. Continuing. Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Cypher.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Madam Chair Pruitt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones, I believe we have, uh... Is that what we're saying unanimously, though?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Alan, I'm gonna ask you to please stop sharing your screen so I can see the people in the meeting. We now are at item number four on our agenda. Uh, this is the time when we ask members of the public if they would like to provide public comment on an item. I know one per, at least one person, Mr. Kern, asked to be able to give some public comment today. And I would remind Mr. Kern and any other member of the public, this is a time for general comment and on the work of the commission and of water quality in New Mexico. And, uh, we appreciate your participation and look forward to hearing what you have to say. Thank you. Mr. Kern, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me, Ms. Pruitt? Great. Well, um, I'm the executive director of a nonprofit organized in Curry County called the Clean Water Partnership Cannon. And, uh, I'm also registered as a lobbyist in Santa Fe. I should, I think I'm supposed to state that. Um, but on item number six on today's agenda, uh, which I know, um, would include an executive session component, and that sounds great to us. Um, item number six has to do with a proposed settlement agreement that the department has reached with Cannon Air Force Base. And this is a quickly issue in eastern New Mexico. Um, Cannon Air Force Base, as you know, has operated without a water discharge permit for some time. And, um, the department has assessed some penalties. This settlement agreement appears to us to obviate, uh, 2018 regulatory changes made by this commission and waive much of the penalty associated with their non-compliance with those. So I submitted a memorandum in opposition to the proposed settlement agreement on Friday to Mr. Cuera and staff. to Mr. Cuera and staff, and I don't wanna take all day to go through it, and I'm not going to do that, but I would like to just draw the commission's attention to the, um, to the memorandum, which highlights-
Hold, hold, hold on just a minute, Alan, please do not share that on the screen right now. Uh, I did not receive that as a commission member, I assume nobody else did. This is not, uh, a public participation item on our agenda, uh, and we, we are willing to hear some public comment for you, but, uh, the, our Water Quality Control Commission rules, and the Water Quality Act, do not provide, uh, a role for anyone who is not a party to this action, and as far as I know, I have not seen your name or organization join this agenda item and case as a party. So I'm gonna let you go ahead and give a brief public, public comment on your position and statement, but I don't think I can let the commission consider a piece of evidence that was not entered into the record on this matter from someone who is not a party in this matter. Do we have our attorney, uh, on the line who could give us some advice on this? Doesn't sound like, when we get to that matter on the agenda, uh, if we don't have Mr. Sanchez, I will allow the attorneys for the parties to make some statements or give us some advice on whether we can consider or should disregard, uh, the document and the statements of Mr. Kern, but in interest of allowing, supporting the public and allowing public participation, I am gonna let you go ahead and make some public comment on this, Mr. Kern, so please proceed.
Well, ma'am, ma'am. Ms. Pruitt, this is, uh, Attorney General for the Environment Department in the Cannon Air Force Base matter, and I understand, um, and appreciate your comments on, on, uh, for the later agenda item, but I would also just like to know the department's objection to that inclusion based on the, uh, statements that you provided about, um, uh, the regulations, uh, some contemplating of all for the public, and that this is not a, uh, Mr. Kern's orientation is not a party to this matter at this time.
All right, Mr. Tencio, as I said, I will allow both you and Major Kern to make a statement about the admissibility and the weight that the commission should give to this, but we do allow public comment at our meetings. It is, as I stated earlier, intended as a time for the public to give us general considerations and general information. It's not really supposed to be a time to comment on a specific pending matter, uh, so I will, uh, but I will in the interest of transparency, uh, and support for the public, I will allow you to give us a short statement, Mr. Kern, preferably under five minutes, and please proceed now.
Thank you very much. Um, the, um, commission has issued a regulation, a promulgated regulation in 2018, which is number 20.6.2.7, T as in Tom, subparagraph two, and then M K C, and this regulated what are known as, uh, PFCs, is a perfluorinated, uh, alkalized and perfluorinated carbon, they're long-chain carbon chemicals which were used in firefighting activity in the Cannon Air Force Base, among other uses and applications around the country. It's endemic in our nation, but the Air Force has, the Department of Defense has issued a, in the last sixty days since this agreement was, um, reached, a series of, uh, guid, uh, guidance items for the Department of Defense, and we both, uh, proposed, proposed settlement agreement, um, disregards the import and impact of those. I have included, uh, one of these memoranda in my submission of Friday, and, um, the, the nonprofit feels that the Air Force does not deserve to be granted a new permit if it fails to comply with its own policies, number one, and secondly, with this commission's regulations. Um, it looks to us that the proposed agreement sets us back in time to the 2014 standards that this commission had, and allows the Air Force to get away with murder, virtually speaking. Um, the water in, uh, Curry County has been impacted by these TFCs to a distance of five miles from the airbase. Uh, the city of Clovis's water supply, which is run by Epcor, has been impacted by this. They've had to shut down wells. The Air Force has done absolutely nothing in the community. It has performed a site inspection on its property, which has registered the fact that they do, do need to provide cleanup. They have not provided a site inspection off the grounds where the, uh, proposed, uh, leach fields are, uh, where the, where the public is impacted, public health, as well as agricultural products that go into the food chain, and finally, the environment. And it's a total of, uh, nineteen point seven million gallons of TFC solutions that have been dumped into Curry County by the Air Force over the past forty to forty years or so, and the Air Force refuses to act, and now the Air Force would like this commission to turn a blind eye to its own regulations, and we object strenuously, and we, we disagree with the purpose and intent of this agreement. Thank you.
Hold on just a minute, uh, Mr. Kern. Alan, I believe Counselor Sanchez is showing on the screen as Aurora Sanchez, and would like to say something. Mr. Sanchez, Aurora Sanchez, you sent me a message.
You talk to him, go ahead.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, thank God, this has been a, a perfect nightmare. I am, I have a remote connection, uh, with, uh, the Attorney General's Office, and it's not working this morning, so I'm having to borrow my wife's computer, which is why I'm showing up under her name, and, um, I really have a whole lot of catching that I have to do, I genuinely apologize to everyone, but it's been such a snap to, uh, get on me and, and let me know how I can help.
All right, so you are not attempting to say anything about Mr. Kern's statement?
Um, I, I did have some earlier comments about, uh, going into the post for executive session, uh, there seemed to, then I, I heard intermittently some questions about the agenda, uh, or the past agenda rather, that has been posted on the WQCC website. Uh, I'll be glad to address those matters, um, and I'm sorry that I'm having to do them so delayedly, but, uh, the connectivity was a problem.
It, it, it appears it's still a little bit of a problem, your, your, uh, what I'm hearing is fairly wobbly, but I am able to understand you. My question at this point, before we go backwards, is, Mr. Kern has been making a public statement specifically addressed in Agenda Item Number Six, the proposed settlement, uh, WQCC number twenty dash oh eight, the Cannon Air Force Base matter, um, he has been doing this and submitted a document, uh, for filing which commissioners have not received. He submitted that on Friday at some time. The question, Mr. Sanchez, is, do you have any advice for the commission on the admissibility of Mr. Kern's public comment, or his document, or the weight that the commissioners should give to this public comment and statement, given that he is not a party to the matter? Okay, I'm not hearing from-
Generally, the, the public comment portion of the agenda is for the public to make big general comments regarding, uh, just matters of, of general interest. I, I, can you hear me now?
You're fairly wobbly, but I'm, I'm understanding what you're saying.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Mr. Sanchez, I'm talking, uh, can you hear me?
Okay, uh, were you able to hear that first portion of what I, of what I said?
Yes, I'm gonna ask-
Again, just to recap briefly, uh, um, the, the public comment portion. I can hear you clearly.
Mr. Sanchez, you're, you're coming in and out and breaking up. I'm gonna move past this and move on with the agenda. Um, Mr. Kern, were you finished with your statement?
I just have two more points I'd like to raise, and the first is that, um, that the Air Force's own- You're breaking up. I can't hear you, no.
Mr. Sanchez, I do not think you have a good and stable connection. We cannot stop the Water Quality Control Commission. Yes, who's speaking, please?
Would you please?
Who is speaking can't hear anything. Still not hearing anything, um.
Madam Chair, if I can continue, I can, I can wrap up very briefly.
Thank you. Mr. Kern, please continue. Mr. Sanchez, we will give you another attempt at participating once Mr. Kern is finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pruitt. I, I just wanted to report that in a site inspection evaluation prepared by Foster Wheeler for the Air Force in 2017, which was published in August of 2018, giving rise to this public, uh, problem that we have here in Curry County, um, the Air Force itself reported that they have TFCs in the, in the, uh, water table there at eleven hundred parts per trillion, that's, uh, nine times the EPA's standard, which is applicable to the Air Force, and they reported that they made the monitoring wells that reached the Okalala Aquifer reported scores of twenty-six thousand parts per trillion of TFCs, the two TFCs which are regulated, which is three hundred and seventy-one times higher than the lifetime health advisory standard that the EPA has established for, uh, human consumption. So we have, it's a metaphysical fact that the water is contaminated there, both the groundwater and the Okalala Aquifer, um, mu- much of the industry in that region is threatened or has been severely hampered by this water contamination, and finally, I would just say that the regu, the, the two sets of policy statements that the Air Force has issued since the time that this agreement was signed off on by Counsel for the NMEB and, and the Commander of the Air Base, provide that, um, there should be direct consultation with the community about these matters, and attributing their lack of communication to the department's ongoing litigation, they have had absolutely no contact with the community of Clovis, community of Portales, Curry County, Roosevelt County, nothing. So your constituents are completely in the dark, and have been told most recently through the New Mexico Congressional delegation, that an Air Force Liaison Officer told them they have no interest and are not, and have no motivation to clean the water or address this problem primarily in Curry County. So we are being gobsmacked by the Air Force, and we ask that the commission take advantage of this opportunity in relation to the water discharge permit and hold them to account according to the New Mexico regulation published by this commission. And with that, I will be quiet, and thank you very much for your time. The memorandum I submitted has a few attachments to it, maps, diagrams, charts, even documents from the Air Force themselves, and I would request that, if counsel can find a way to provide that to the commissioners, um, it would be very much appreciated by our group, which is purp, the purpose of which is to provide and secure clean water in eastern New Mexico, and I thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Kern, thank you for your statement. San, Counsel Sanchez, are you on the line and able to make any, uh, comment, uh, about this matter at this time?
Are, are you able to hear me?
Not really, but keep trying.
Are you able to hear me?
No, you're breaking up, and I'm not hearing, hearing you very well.
Public, uh, portion of the agenda is not the appropriate- I, I just, uh, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm frustrated, I don't know what the problem is, is, uh, we have via sad, uh, connection with, uh, maybe, when this is causing the problem?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Sanchez, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, for the, what I was able to hear from your, this was not, uh, what one would expect and allow during a public comment period, and I am going to have to ask the commission to disregard both Mr. Kern's statement and any document he submitted. He's not, he and his group are not a party to this matter, uh, he was speaking specifically on an agenda item, not making public comment, he was not under oath. Much of what he said was in the nature of testimony, not comment, and, uh, it's just not appropriate for the commission to take into consideration testimony or evidence not submitted under oath and not submitted within, uh, the evidentiary record of a matter on the commission's agenda. Then, as I said, I'm go, uh, going to allow the attorneys on this matter to speak on this when we get to Agenda Item Number Six, but for now, uh, I would like to move to, to see if there are any other members of the public that are on the webex that would like to make a public comment at this time, and I guess I would ask that you unmute yourself and identify yourself if there is anyone on the line that would like to make a public comment.
Madam Chair, you're unmuted.
Sorry, um, we're gonna move to, uh, number five on the agenda. I have not heard anybody try to make public comment. Commissioners, we have advised the Attorney General's Office that we're having great difficulty, uh, hearing, uh, at Mr. Sanchez, and that he's not really able to participate meaningfully in this meeting. I don't think they are able to provide this with anyone else, but we've advised that we may, uh, continue the meeting, uh, without counsel. Uh, if we get to a point where the commissioners are uncomfortable with that, please let me know, and we will see if we can perhaps take a recess or try something else. Um, Mr. Sanchez, it looks like you're trying to speak again. We're not hearing you, so we're gonna move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Proposed Settlement Agreement.
Senator Pruitt?
Yes.
Ye- yes, I am. I keep trying to fix the problem, uh, uh. Again, I have no remote connectivity with the agency's office. My remote connection is completely impaired.
Mr. Sanchez, you are continuing to fade in and out, so, um, please.
I said nothing. I'm just trying to fix the problem.
Well, you're, you're, uh, you are not muted, so the screen is showing that you are attempting to speak. So I would appreciate it if you would mute yourself unless you are trying to speak. Thank you. Let's move on to number five, Proposed Settlement Agreement in WQCC twenty dash oh four CO, Acme Hometown Cleaners versus, and, uh, New Mexico Environment Department. Uh, do we have counsel on the line for Acme? I believe that's Mr. Domenici Junior.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair and members. Uh, I'm here.
Thank you. And for the commish- uh, for the Environment Department, I show Owen Johnson, who has since left uh, the department, and Christopher Atencio. Do we have Mr. Atencio on the line?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Uh, this is Chris Atencio for the Environment Department.
Good morning, Mr. Atencio. So counsel, uh, would each of you like to describe and discuss this proposed settlement? And we will see if any of the commissioners have any questions about it.
That's fine. Um, Chris, do you wanna go first, or you want me to? Uh, I'll let you go first. Okay, so, um, Madam Commissioner and, and members of the commission, this is a settlement involving a, a, uh, building in Alamogordo that's been used for various things for quite a while. And at some point during its use, it has been a retail dry cleaner. And, um, there has been, uh, it appears there's been a release into the shallow soils uh, near the, uh, where the dry cleaning tanks or the dry cleaning plant was, which is in the north, um, east corner, uh, of the building. My client obtained this building, uh, in two thousand and five when his longtime banker told him he had a transaction he'd like him to be involved in, financed him to go to the bank's foreclosure sale and purchase this property with no money down. And he, uh, maybe should have known that he was being sold a lemon. Uh, he would not, it would not disclose to him why the bank was willing to do this extremely unusual financing arrangement. But he took the building and he operated it as different things, and he did operate it for, for probably around two years as a dry cleaner. It's been vacant for several years. It's vacant today. It's been vacant all of the time NMEB's conduct was taking place. That is set forth in the compliance order. So NMEB contacted him with this vacant building, uh, and asked him to do a, uh, some sampling. Essentially, it was to put in a well down to the groundwater that also could monitor for vapors. So he did that. The groundwater was below standards. The, uh, the shallow vapors were above the, uh, above standards. The, um, NMEB applied, and I argue incorrectly and possibly illegally, the vapor rule that's put in the WQCC regs effective, uh, twenty eighteen, which indicates that if there are vapors that could endanger human health inside a, a closed building, that those vapors need to be evaded. Uh, that, uh, regula- regulation has never been challenged, but it does not have any basis in the Water Quality Act, which was the basis for the regulatory changes in two thousand and eighteen. Nonetheless, um, uh, my client did the initial sample, additional sampling, um, really under the old rag as well to make sure there was no vapors capable of affecting groundwater, which we think he's demonstrated. Uh, under the, the new rag, which I think is possibly not valid, he is abating the situation by having a vacant building. The NMEB has accepted vacant buildings or maintaining vacancy as a method of abating, uh, potential impacts to human health, um, inside a closed building when there's no one in the closed building. So it's, um, so the compliance order was fine. It is, it assessed an extremely excessive and unproductive penalty, uh, because Mr. Ochoa and his wife were not abating a vacant premises, which is not required to be abated by your own questionable regulations. Uh, and then they, then, only after you put the first well in, did they say they, they wanted a downstream well after the first well had shown negative, which typically that would be reversed. If it shows positive, you would put in a downstream well. Nonetheless, uh, we, we did work out a settlement. The, the main focus on the settlement was to get work done on the property, which is to, uh, put in a vapor extraction system on the well that was already drilled and to, to drill a downstream well. And, uh, this property is particularly impacted by COVID. There was a potential buyer slash developer who was going to put a, a so-called modern dry cleaner in there with a coffee shop and, uh, high, high capacity. They, uh, stopped all their activity around, uh, around, uh, February or March. They have expressed no further interest in this property. Uh, Mr. Ochoa and his wife have, uh, real property, primarily vacant, which is a very difficult market to, uh, to fill property in under the COVID situation. So we worked out a timeline that we think is workable. The SDE needs to be, uh, in, in operation within a hundred and twenty days, and the downstream well needs to be drilled and sampled within a hundred and eighty days via chance. Uh, there is a section in there about how this potential developer could qualify for the VRP, which may happen. I don't think it would happen, uh, actually. The third component of the settlement is the downstream well needs to be tested for, for four quarters, even if it shows, uh, negative on the first test, which is another somewhat unusual requirement. Um, so, um, I don't think the VRP would come into effect until after that one year period expires. What the agreement says, it, it significantly reduces the penalty to ten thousand dollars. With, and then, uh, if my clients do not meet their timelines for the three items, the SDE, the, the well, or the one-year test, uh, testing, the, uh, three hundred and thirty thousand dollar penalty kicks back in. So I think the Environment Department is greatly protected. I think they, there's an extremely high likelihood that, that they will get data. Uh, so will my client. Hopefully, the data is helpful, but if it's not, there's also requirements that, uh, uh, stage one abatement could be requested based on the groundwater sampling. So I think this is a fair deal. I think, um, it reflects the reality that there's very limited cash to do this work at this, um, time. So the problem was predated two thousand and five, when my client purchased the property from the bank. Uh, and so I think this really achieves the objective of making sure this guy is not a problem. If it is a problem, making sure it's identified, putting in place, uh, strict timelines to ensure that, putting in place a penalty to assure that. Um, so, um, I would request that the commission approve this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Counselor. Uh, Mr. Atencio?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Uh, I don't have too much more to add to what Mr. Domenici stated, um, other than the terms of the compliance order, uh, and the shortcomings there uh, on, on the part, uh, of the other party were well documented and that the compliance order would speak for itself. Regardless of that, I don't know that arguing the terms of, of the compliance order uh, or the validity of the regulations is the, that this is the correct time or place for that, uh, this morning. So rather than this morning, the department, uh, respectfully requests that the commission, um, having seen the, uh, settlement agreement and the proposed stipulated final order, uh, approved the terms pursuant to the following regulations. And Mr. Domenici is right that there are, um, the, the department agrees that there are adequate compliance steps, uh, contained within the settlement agreement that will achieve the ends that the, uh, compliance order was designed, um, to, to compel. Uh, and that these, these terms are acceptable to, to the Bureau and the department. As Mr. Domenici noted, that there are adequate protections in place, uh, for the firm, and should there be new timelines or non-compliance in the part, uh, of Mr. Domenici's clients. Um, so with that, uh, the department would be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have, uh, but respectfully request that the commission approve the settlement agreement and adopt the stipulated final order. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atencio. So at this time, what I would like to do is see if any commission members have any questions for either of the attorneys. We'll go through those, uh, one at a time, and, uh, then we will decide on our next step, which presumably will be whether we want to deliberate in open session or have a conversation with counsel about possible closed session, even though, uh, that was not on the agenda in advance. It may be that commission does, that commissioners don't feel like they need to have an executive session on this, but we can cross that bridge in a little while. Uh, I would start, uh, with any commissioner that has any questions for either of the attorneys.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Thompson. I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Thompson, please.
And it seems like a fairly straightforward, uh, settlement. Um, but in Agenda Items eighteen and twenty-one in the proposed, uh, settlement, they talk about location of, uh, monitoring wells two and three, but they are very nonspecific. Uh, it, it, and I wonder if it would be appropriate to add a bit of language that we might say something like, these monitoring wells would be located at, uh, placed in a location acceptable to NMEB, so that there is a reasonable chance of generating useful information.
Yeah, we, we would not object to that, uh, as far as the respondent. I think that was implied, but if it's not stated, so we have no objection.
Mr. Atencio?
Uh, I don't think the department would object to that either, uh, and it would have to be appropriately memorialized, um, uh, somehow in that, uh, stipulated final order.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Thompson, I think you've got another thing.
Well, that's it. Thank you very much.
All right, any other commissioners with questions? Wow, this is a, a quiet group of commissioners today. Um, so commissioners, uh, I would, I, I just wanted to ask a question. Um, so just to be clear, Mr. Atencio, initially, almost three hundred and forty thousand, five hundred dollars in penalties were assessed at this ma- in this matter. And if all deadlines are met and all work proceeds as specified in the settlement, that would all be forgiven except ten thousand dollars, uh, which I believe was, um, Mr. Mr. Domenici described that as giving the department some security that, uh, all deadlines would be met. Is that how you would read that as well?
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I, I, I would. Uh, I think having that, uh, such a large, um, uh, what's the word, um, reinstatement of that, that penalty, should there be compliance deadlines missed, uh, would be a significant means of, of compelling time to compliance. Um, and in a way of allowing, uh, the, uh, the means of Mr. Domenici's clients to be put towards, uh, fixing this situation, um, in, in a timely manner. So, uh, yes, I think it is protective and, and something that the, the Bureau can, uh, can agree to, to ensure that there is time to compliance.
Thank you. The other question that I have is, are there any deadlines or, or work in this matter that are being held up pending the commission's approval of the settlement? Or are things proceeding as if it were approved?
Uh, we are waiting for the approval. The dead, the dead, the way the agreement, um, reads is the deadlines kick in upon approval. So there is some preliminary work. The, uh, the consultant that did the first wh- well has already been consulted about putting the vapor extraction on it. They've already been consulted about the cost and the amount of time it will take to drill a well and sample it. But millfield work has been done, you know, primarily because they wanna be sure this agreement is final, and it doesn't require any work before it's final.
Madam Chair, yeah, this, this Atencio again. Um, I think the department agrees with that. Most of these compliance, uh, points are conditioned upon the effective date of the agreement, uh, which would be, I think, this is structured to consider that as the approval date of the commission.
Okay, thank you. Um, those are the only questions that I have. Um, are there any other commissioners that would like to speak up at this time?
Madam Chair?
Who's speaking, please?
This is Robert Sanchez. I was finding able to connect telephonically, so I am now, uh, with the, uh, commission on this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Um, having you by telephone is, uh, helpful because we can hear you loud and clear now. Uh, would you like to give the commission any advice, Mr. Sanchez, about whether it could go into executive session to deliberate on this proposed settlement? Uh, as we determined at the beginning of this meeting, although you and I did review and approve a final agenda that had language in it saying the commission might go into executive session to deliberate on these two steps. on these two settlements and on the other matters later on the agenda, that final agenda with that language in it did not get posted on the commission's, uh, website on Friday as the final agenda. The final agenda was posted without any language about executive session. So my question is, would it be a violation of the Open Meetings Act for the commission to go into executive if one of the commissioners made that motion or request? Mr. Sanchez?
Notice last night in preparing for today's meeting that it was a draft agenda and it didn't contain the rest of that language under the Open Meetings Act, so it would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act for the commission to go into closed or executive session, uh, as the agenda was posted.
All right, thank you for that. So commissioners, uh, I would, uh, ask you all if you, uh, feel comfortable and would like to deliberate on this matter now, uh, and what your thoughts are.
Madam Chair, this is Gabriel Wade. Um, I do not see any agenda items that I feel uncomfortable about deliberating on the record. So I could feel comfortable moving forward with the meeting on this item and as far as I can tell, the other items.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. Anybody else have any input on this?
Uh, Madam Chair, this is Larry Dominguez. I would concur with Commissioner Wade. I believe, um, most of these items, and we'll just take them one at a time, but, uh, the agenda item that we're currently on, I think we can hold that deliberations in a public setting and move forward on this. We have way too many items in front of the commission to, uh, put things off further, so I think we need to, uh, move forward on items and, uh, get some things accomplished so stuff can start occurring at the field level.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Okay, uh, I I agree with that position. Can I just ask if any, uh, commissioners have a problem with proceeding to deliberate on this particular item? We can ask this question for each deliberation as we move forward.
Madam Chair?
Yes, who's speaking, please?
This is Counsel Sanchez. Just to amplify, uh, some of the comments that may be, under the Open Meetings Act, the public policy of the state is that all persons or staff with as much as possible information regarding the affairs of government and the special acts of their office and employees. The exceptions to having deliberation or discussion in open meeting under the Open Meetings Act are are not, are not required, they're simply allowed, it does, the act is not required, the commission to go into closed session. Uh, when I look at, at twenty point one, point three, twenty-two B regarding settlement, it, all, the only guideline is that, that the commission look at the settlement to be consistent with the provisions and objectives of the Water Quality Act and the regulations, that's the scope of the review. Uh, it's hard for me to imagine that that discussion that might be ensuing would would require going into closed session. There is a point at which any of the commissioners feel like their discussion or their particular points of view are such that they should be better voiced in closed session, the remedy would be under, given the fact that the draft agenda was posted with no closed session language, uh, would be, if if, and I can certainly, you can call the commissioners, if anyone feels as if what they would say regarding the pending set, well, proposed settlement agreement could only be said in closed session, the remedy would be to then have a, to table the matter, have, call a special session, uh, a closed special session and proceed in that manner.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Uh, I think we, I think we understand that. So, uh, commissioners, um, any comments, uh, do we have a motion? What what direction would you like to go?
Madam Chair, Mark Hutchinson.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes, I would move forward, uh, discussions. The approval of the settlement agreement with Commissioner Thompson's suggested language as stipulated by parties.
Madam Chair, Gabriel Wade. Um, I think that the agreement speaks for itself. I agree to, um, Commissioner Thompson's amendment, so I would second the motion.
Thank you. And just to be clear, uh, on your motion, that would be an amendment to the agreement that any monitor well locations would be approved by the Environment Department before they are installed? Is that?
That's correct. This is Howard.
Thank you. So, uh, we've had a motion in a second. Is there any discussion, commissioners? All right, having been urged to move along, uh, Ms. Jones, would you please, uh, read the roll call so we can vote, please?
Yes, Pam. Beginning. Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Surtin?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Musharafi?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Cypher?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Madam Chair Pruitt?
Yes.
Thank you.
So then you tell us that the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, let's, we've been going for almost an hour and a half. I know standing in front of computers can be very tiring, particularly for our administrators who cannot step away even for a second, so I would like to take a ten-minute break until ten thirty-five. Click yourself on mute, do whatever you want, and everybody can come back refreshed and ready to make some progress. Thank you. Uh, Alan, would you please take down the shared screen and let's see if we have commissioners back in business here. Um, perhaps Ms. Jones, would you please read the roll again since I cannot necessarily see everybody on screen? Thank you.
Yes, beginning with, uh, Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes, here.
Okay. Commissioner Surtin?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Here.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Here.
Commissioner Mick Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Musharafi?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Patton?
Here.
Commissioner Rader? Commissioner Rader? Continuing on, Commissioner Cypher? Thank you. Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Thompson?
Talking to you.
I'm sorry, was that you, Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Timmons?
Yes, thank you for the break.
Thanks. Commissioner Wade?
Here.
And let me go back up, is Commissioner Rader with us?
Yes, apologies for the delay.
No, no worries. And, uh, Madam Chair, you're with us?
I'm with you.
I think you've got the whole group back.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. All right, we will move on to number six on our agenda, proposed settlement agreement in WQCC twenty dash O eight C O, this is Cannon Air Force Base and the New Mexico Environment Department. I show Christopher Attencio and Andrew Knight, co-counsel for the New Mexico Environment Department. Are you all present?
This is Andrew Knight for the New Mexico Environment Department. Good morning.
And this is Chris Attencio for the department as well.
Thank you, good morning to you both, and I show Major Mark E. Coon, uh, counsel for Cannon Air Force Base. Mr. Coon?
Madam Chair, Major Coon here for the Air Force, can you hear me all right?
As we did with the, uh, other matter, uh, why don't we start with, uh, Mr. Coon, uh, Major Coon and the Air Force? And I will, um, invite all counsel to, um, also speak to the admissibility and weight that the commission should give to the statement and document from Mr. Coon at this, uh, time. Please describe the settlement, uh, why, what you think the commission should do with this proposed settlement, and any comments you have on that other matter. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, members of the commission. Uh, with regard to the, uh, to the previous statement from, uh, Mr. Kent, uh, all I would say, ma'am, is that, uh, as a matter of policy, the Air Force is certainly not opposed to, uh, public comment in these types of matters, and, uh, we welcome those types of comments, but, uh, as a matter of procedure, it is my understanding of the rule that, um, given that Mr. Kent and his organization are not a party to this matter, that, uh, the statement that he provided earlier during the public commentary is, uh, not admissible and not considerable, uh, or not open to consideration by the commission when it comes to approving this settlement agreement. Um, that's all I have to say about that, ma'am. Perhaps I would yield the floor to Mr. Attencio to see if he has any input on that item, uh, at this time, over.
Madam Chair, would you like me to address it at this time, or would you prefer that I wait?
Yes, ma'am. Now, let's, let's go ahead and get that one over with. Thank you. And Major, uh, Ms. Major Coon, the man's name is Kern, K E R N, rather than Kent. Sorry for your error.
Thank you, ma'am.
Go ahead, Mr. Attencio. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Major Coon and members of this mission. Uh, I, I agree, uh, with, uh, Major Coon's position as to, uh, the appropriateness on the procedure. As noted earlier, uh, the department objects to, uh, inclusion, uh, Mr. Kent's statement in any kind of, uh, record for this proceeding. Uh, I think the regulations speak for themselves. They mention that they do not contemplate, uh, public objection at this time, uh, that the commission's role in this area is review of the settlement agreement and determination whether it's in accordance with the, um, commission's regulations. Uh, um, Mr. Kern and his organization are not a party, uh, to this proceeding, uh, and have not indicated, um, made any indication up to this point. Uh, I refer to note that, uh, based on, on timestamp on my email, I did not receive this, this document objecting to the settlement agreement until after five o'clock on Friday, uh, before holiday weekend, so, uh, very short time, uh, to review, uh, and respond to it. Um, I think, um, further in terms of the admissibility or the relevance to this proceeding, uh, this matter, uh, uh, really doesn't, um, excuse me, the, the memo that, uh, Mr. Kern provided, um, somewhat misses the mark as to what the compliance order is addressing and what the settlement agreement is designed to address as well. Uh, I'd note that, um, the compliance order was, or, it's going to discharge permit, uh, and then, uh, discharging without a permit, uh, based on, on not having that timely supplemental, so the department's determination. Uh, but, uh, the department and Cannon Air Force Base are in the process right now of reviewing a, a new application that was submitted, uh, by Cannon Air Force Base after the compliance order was issued, and that we are not yet at the stage of reviewing a draft permit, uh, a draft discharge permit. So procedurally, it can be more appropriate for Mr. Kern's, uh, concerns and comments to be addressed to the normal, um, discharge permit procedures, uh, and what there is a draft discharge permit to, to actually address. Uh, so I, I have respect for the request of the commission, um, in this regard, at the middle, uh, and, uh, to give any weight to, to those comments at this time. Thank you.
All right, and I think we've heard from our counsel on that, and, uh, Major Coon, would you like to proceed now, uh, with your opening statement or discussion about settlement agreement, proposed settlement agreement, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, in terms of the, uh, settlement agreement that's going to reach, um, the United States therefore takes the position that the clean terms of the agreement speak for itself, and, uh, we're here today to respectfully request that the commission, uh, approve it on its terms. Um, in terms of additional background, uh, Mr. Attencio and I were in communication, uh, earlier this morning, and, uh, we thought that it would be appropriate for, uh, him as a, uh, counsel for, uh, the state to, um, to provide that outline. So with, uh, with that in mind, it pleases you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission, uh, I would yield the court opinion to do that at this time. Thank you.
All right, that sounds fine. Thank you, Major Coon. Mr. Attencio, please proceed.
I thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Um, again, the morning, and thanks for this opportunity to provide, uh, a summary of the settlement, settlement agreement reached by the New Mexico Environment Department and Cannon Air Force Base in this matter. Uh, as the, the record, um, notes that the Department's Groundwater Quality Bureau issued this administrative compliance order on January ninth, twenty twenty. On that date, the department was awaiting a response from Cannon Air Force Base as to a discharge permit application addressing known PFOS contamination on base. Um, while the Bureau did not demand that the existing contamination be addressed in groundwater discharge permit application, it did require acknowledgement and determination that Cannon's wastewater treatment facility would not contribute to the contamination. Um, and I think we've, uh, kind of addressed maybe a little bit... Um, and I think we've, uh, kind of addressed maybe a little bit the situation of remediation throughout the morning here, uh, but, uh, I mean, just to state, the remediation of the contamination is being handled through separate processes. Uh, mainly right now, the department is, uh, in discussions and litigation with the Air Force on that matter, uh, to the, uh, to RICRA and the State Hazardous Waste Act, uh, which are not programmed being administered by the, the Department's Hazardous Waste Bureau, not the Groundwater Quality Bureau. Uh, so that matter is being addressed through separate processes and this is, this matter is specific to, uh, Cannon's wastewater treatment facility and the discharge from that facility. Throughout this process, uh, and following the issuance of a, uh, administrative compliance order, Cannon requested multiple extensions to address the bureau's questions as well as extensions to submit information about the presence of PFAS in the proposed treatment or the remedy. Primarily, this compliance order ordered Cannon to submit a complete renewal and modification application as well as case of penalty. Since that time, Cannon and the department have engaged in protective settlement negotiations and that settlement was reached and signed on July twelfth, twenty twenty. Through these negotiations, the department acknowledges that Cannon did submit an application on January fifteenth, twenty twenty, a compliance, administrative compliance order. Additionally, per the terms of the agreement, Cannon will pay administrative fees of two hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty cents. Finally, Cannon will continue to comply with the terms of its March thirty-first, two thousand fourteen groundwater discharge permit as though it were still in effect. This allows the bureau the time it needs to develop an appropriate draft discharge permit for Cannon Air Force Base and the base to continue discharging, uh, with appropriate initial protection in place until that draft discharge permit is ready for, uh, for public comment and, and openly reading for a final discharge permit. The department believes that with these steps in place, it can effectively work with the permittee to ensure that its wastewater treatment facility does not contribute to the ongoing PFAS contamination at Cannon Air Force Base. Therefore, the department respectfully requests of the commission to approve the settlement agreement presented by the party, uh, through the stipulated final orders that we submitted as, as a courtesy and, and for your convenience, uh, for you this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atencio. We usually only have one designated hitter per party, so I'm assuming, uh, Mr. Knight is not going to add anything. I will see if Major Coon would like to add anything to Mr. Atencio's statement.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to add, um, additional comments to Mr. Atencio's statement, but frankly, I, uh, I don't have anything to add. I, uh, utterly and completely agree with his, uh, very archaic of any sense of overview of, uh, the terms of the agreement itself, so nothing further to add at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, well, then I will go to commissioners to see if, uh, any commissioners have any questions they would like to ask the attorneys for either party.
Madam Chair, Howard Hutchinson.
Commissioner Hutchinson, please proceed.
I would, uh, just say that the attorneys for the party's suggestion that comments by other interested parties should be reserved for the application for the discharge permit is well stated and, uh, agree with, with their presentation on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. Any, anything else you'd like to ask or add?
I'm good with that. I would be prepared with a motion if the chair is ready.
Uh, let me ask a question, a couple of questions first and then I'll come back. See if any other commissioners have had anything spring into their mind. One question that I have, counselors, um, this initially proposed a one point seven million dollar civil penalty and instead the settlement agreement contains a, around two hundred and fifty thousand dollar administrative fee. Would you please compare and contrast those two, uh, charges and explain where the different ones would go?
Uh, Madam Chair, this is Christopher Atencio. Uh, a- as you note, there is a difference between those two. Um, there are a variety of reasons why, uh, the bureau and ultimately the Water Protection Division of the Environment Department, uh, felt that it was in its interest to accept, uh, that difference between the, the civil penalty and the administrative fee into the settlement agreement. Uh, I can't, uh, go into all those reasons as to, um, as to the exact thinking and all that, other than it believes that this is appropriate, uh, given the, the nature of the, the non-compliance, the, uh, efforts of the Air Force and the interest in moving forwards with getting an effective discharge permit in place for Cannon Air Force Base. Uh, you are correct to note that one is a penalty and one is a fee. Um, I might, uh, defer to, uh, Major Coon as to why, uh, some of those, uh, why the difference, um, in, in terminology. I will state, though, in terms of, from a, a state government, a Mexico state government perspective, uh, that yes, those are treated differently and we've been in discussions with our financial staff as to the exact, uh, accounts that I would go into, but penalties, uh, by statute do go into the state general fund, administrative fees for permitted facilities, so, uh, go into funds administrative, administrative either of the two.
Thank you, Mr. Atencio. Major Coon, would you like to add anything?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I will just add, um, with regard to the difference between a fine or penalty and an administrative fee, um, the, the language changing it from a fine or penalty or two with administrative fee stems from, um, constitutional and fiscal law constraints on the United States government, whereas it is effectively still legal for us to pay something that's characterized as a fine or penalty in this context, but then re-characterized as a fee, uh, it becomes legal. So that's just a, a matter of federal law and as, um, as Mr. Atencio said, uh, any, um, difference in terms of where that money goes, uh, in terms of the New Mexico coffers, uh, that's a matter of state law. Um, but thank you. Um, back to you.
Okay, thank you. Another question that I had was the settlement agreement says it is okay for, uh, for the permittee to continue to discharge, quote, until a final determination is made on, unquote, the January fifteen, twenty twenty permit renewal application. And, uh, correct me, it, uh, or please e- elucidate for me, uh, the status here. So there was a twenty fourteen permit, it expired, and because there was no re-application six months ahead of time, that permit was not administratively continued. But then a new permit application was filed and, uh, the parties are agreeing here to permit the Air Force to discharge under the twenty fourteen permit as if it had been administratively continued until the new permit is issued. Or, I don't know, there could be other options, but maybe, would you please just clarify for us the discharge status?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, and, uh, I take the, the first crack at this one, and Major Coon, uh, uh, can I respond here? Um, I think the, the, the status of the two thousand fourteen discharge permit and the status of the expiration of that permit, uh, including, uh, based on the, the first submit, uh, application submitted by Cannon Air Force Base is, uh, was one of the matters under contention, um, in, in the doctored matter before you. Uh, so as part of that settlement agreement, that is one of those matters that, um, I think the parties have different positions on. Uh, the way you stated it, it, I believe is the, the department's position as to an expiration and not being administratively contained, which is contained in the administrative compliance order. I understand, uh, based on the response, uh, the, the answer and request for hearings to anybody in the Air Force, that they disagree with that. Um, so in, in efforts to resolve and move forward with getting an effective discharge permit, um, based on the revised application, uh, that's one of those questions that, uh, the settlement agreement is, we are agreeing to disagree. Um, but wanting to make sure that there are mechanisms in place so that the continuing dis- that Cannon can continue to discharge, uh, while being protective until a new discharge permit is, is issued, um, the bureau is willing to, to continue on with those, the terms of those two thou- those two thousand fourteen, uh, settlement agreements.
Two thousand and fourteen discharge permit?
Yes, excuse me.
Uh, Major Coon, is there anything you would like to say about this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in terms of the outline that you provided, um, before you did before in Mr. Atencio, uh, you were correct that, um, the previous permit, uh, discharge permit was issued in two thousand fourteen, it was set to expire in, um, two thousand nineteen. And as Mr. Atencio said, um, the renewal of that permit was one of the points of contention in this particular case, but, uh, it anyways, the states have the position that that permit was not properly renewed, uh, which is what, what led to this case. And now, as Mr. Atencio said, um, we will, we, the Air Force will be, um, permitted to continue to discharge under the old terms until such time as the new permit is officially renewed. The only additional thing I might add is that, uh, it is my understanding that the new permit renewal application has been received, uh, has been, that it deemed to be administratively complete and is currently being processed for approval. So, uh, to the extent that the commission has any concerns about when that new permit will actually be in effect, um, I believe that, uh, the commission's concerns should be alleviated because the renewal process is already underway. So thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, uh, thank you, counselors. Um, I don't have any other questions. Does anyone on the commission, uh, have any questions for, uh, either Major Coon or Mr. Atencio?
Commissioner, uh, Madam Chair, Howard Hutchinson?
Yes, Commissioner Hutchinson.
Just for the record, um, could the, could Major Coon and, uh, Mr. Atencio clarify the authority for continuation of the existing permit without the renewal?
Madam Chair, this is, uh, Major Coon. Uh, I would certainly defer to Mr. Atencio in terms of the state's position on that, but in terms of the United States' position, I think I would clarify that, uh, in terms of the settlement agreement, do not, uh, renew the previous permit. Uh, we are simply allowed to continue to operate under the terms of the previous permit. Um, I know that's a, a bit of a nuance, but that's, uh, that's the position that the United States would take on it. Uh, I defer to Mr. Atencio in terms of whether it's going to be happening, over.
Uh, thank you, Major Coon, and, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Hutchinson, for your question. Uh, I think the, the commission's role in reviewing a settlement agreement, uh, under the, the regulatory regulations for the commission is to ensure that the settlement agreement is consistent with the commission's regulations. It's sort of a paraphrase, but, um, not exactly what to put. Um, what you're reviewing is, is whether the settlement agreement is consistent with your regulations. Uh, so the, the options, uh, that the, the department and the commission has, the commission has it for, uh, is, uh, discharging without a permit, uh, and without protective terms within a discharge permit or, um, forcing a cessation of all discharges at Cannon Air Force Base. Uh, understanding that there's a large population there, uh, the, the department is, is, um, firm in its understanding that, uh, discharges that are consistent with a, um, a discharge permit, even though it, by the department's position, it has expired, um, uh, the discharge consisting with the terms of that permit, uh, will still be protective of, of groundwater, uh, rather than allowing a discharge without any, uh, protective measures associated with it. Uh, so it, the, the settlement agreement is, and settlement, settlement agreements in general are to fit, um, outside the, uh, normal procedural scope, uh, since we are agreeing to, uh, leave some matters unresolved in, in recognition of coming to effective compliance measures. Uh, so it, it is slightly different than the, the normal procedure, but the department's position is, uh, effective, effectively, uh, protective of, of groundwater, at least in the interim, uh, new discharge permit is, is moving forward. Uh, so if you want to look at it as operating as though, uh, the permit will administratively continue, that is one way to look at it. Um, e- even though we have not agreed to take that position, uh, we can agree to operate, uh, under that, uh, that assumption in, in some manner.
Madam Chair, this is Howard Hutchinson again. I, I guess that the question is, that I asked was, what is the commission's authority, uh, to grant that continuation of operation of the permit? I, I understand the reasoning that has been presented and that if it weren't continued, we wouldn't have a discharge permit. I'm just wondering what the specific authority is of the commission to allow that to occur?
Uh, I'll give our attorney, uh, Counselor Sanchez, an opportunity to weigh in on this, but, uh, my own view, Commissioner Hutchinson, is that the commission, like the agency, has enforcement discretion and the ability to, uh, forgive late submissions or, uh, re- read the rules creatively in order to facilitate and encourage settlements and move, uh, matters along. But, uh, Counselor Sanchez, do you have any advice you want to give on this matter?
Madam Chair, I see he's still muted.
Yeah, he may not, uh, have managed to connect back in after the break. Um, uh, Mr. Atencio or Major Coon, do you have any, uh, statements you can give to Commissioner Hutchinson about the commission's authority to approve this kind of discharge?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Major Coon. Um, I, uh, I would just say that on behalf of the United States, I, I agree with what Madam Chair said earlier in terms of the commission's discretion being very broad, uh, in terms of, um, taking enforcement action on behalf of the state and in coordination with the state, um, as well as the fact that, uh, the rule strongly encouraged settlement. Uh, so I believe reading those provisions together, uh, that's where the, the commission gets its authority to approve a settlement like this. Uh, to the extent that it is specific citation needed, I think that, um, uh, the, the citation in the, in the rules where the commission has the authority to approve settlement agreements is where that would emanate from. Um, and I read that from being, uh, NMAC twenty point one point three point two two. Uh, but, uh, I heard Mr. Atencio trying to come in, uh, ma'am, so I'll defer to him at this time, over.
Uh, thank you, Major Coon. Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Hutchinson, uh, I was going to note that same citations to the regulations twenty point one point three point two two, uh, the, uh, the regulations allowing approval of the settlement agreement. Um, uh, one other, uh, potential, uh, citation, uh, that, that might be of note, uh, as a constituent agency of the commission, uh, the department has the, uh, authority and the power to make every reasonable effort to obtain voluntary cooperation in the prevention or abatement of water pollution. Uh, and, and so, uh, sitting with the, uh, as it says in twenty point one point three, um, excuse me, pull that up real quick. Uh, the provisions and objectives of the Act and regulations, uh, that this settlement agreement would be consistent with those objectives, uh, and the provisions, and that it could, uh, it is a reasonable effort to obtain voluntary compliance, uh, from Cannon Air Force Base in its discharge, uh, and therefore be allowable pursuant to that twenty point one point three point two two B.
Madam Chair, Howard Hutchinson again. Uh, based on, uh, the chair's excellent explanation and the citations offered by Mr. Atencio and Major Coon, I, I just wanted to have those in the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. Do any other commissioners have any comments, questions?
Uh, Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Thompson. Getting back always, beginning of a commission meeting, when, uh, Mr. Coon, uh, was asking for an opportunity to comment, and then you all note that the appropriate time would be for him to comment on when the new discharge permit is issued as a draft. Do we have any idea when a new draft permit might be, might be issued?
Mr. Atencio or Major Coon?
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, Commissioner Thompson. Uh, I spoke with, uh, Michelle Hunter, our Groundwater Quality Bureau Chief this morning. Uh, my understanding is that the Bureau staff are still reviewing that. Uh, there was some additional data submitted by Cannon Air Force Base, uh, earlier this year, uh, which they are also reviewing. Uh, I understand that they are, uh, getting very close on that. I don't have a firm number to give you, um, but my understanding is that they are, are nearly ready for, for that draft to be sent out for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Uh, Commissioner Dominguez, it looks like you have something to share with us?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, a couple of, couple of questions, and I think these would be directed to Mr. Atencio. Uh, the first one gets back to the point that Commissioner Hutchinson was on. And Mr. Atencio, uh, realizing there's still the, the disagreement over administratively complete for the twenty fourteen permit, but, but that disagreement aside, correct me if I'm wrong, but historically, there's, it's not uncommon to have a discharge permit that is reaching expiration, and while the parties work out the details of new conditions, operation under that old permit has continued in other instances around the state. Is that a correct statement?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dominguez, uh, I believe that it hasn't happened in the past yet.
Okay. Just, just wanted to add that to the record so that it's, it's not like we're reinventing the wheel on that point with, with the aspect, uh, the disagreement over administratively complete. I understand that. A second point, and Mr. Atencio already clarified this in his opening statements, but I think there's a lot of misunderstanding by the public as to what's occurring with this discharge permit in relation to the groundwater contamination and remediation. So based, the way I understood, Mr. Atencio's earlier comments were the groundwater contamination and remediation are a separate issue from the settlement agreement and the discharge permit for the wastewater treatment plant. So if Mr. Atencio or Major Coon could make that very clear, because I'm, I speculate that the general public and the media are likely to misinterpret what's being done with this settlement agreement, and I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. If you could, uh, comment towards that, uh, very lengthy question slash comment. Thank you.
Uh, I guess I'll, uh, I'll address, um, briefly, uh, first here. Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Dominguez, yes, those matters are being handled separately. Um, the, the contamination, uh, that has been documented is being handled under, uh, separate laws, separate set of regulations, and in the separate program within the department. This matter is specific to the wastewater treatment facility located at Cannon Air Force Base, uh, and, and, um, in not so official terms, what's coming out at the end of the pipes of that matter?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Major Coon. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to answer Commissioner Dominguez's question on this, because I think it's very important for understanding the overall context of this case. Uh, and I would just note, uh, on behalf of the United States, that, uh, what Commissioner Dominguez and Mr. Atencio said about the very narrow scope of this case is absolutely true, in that this is, uh, much narrower, much i- much more isolated, and much more focused than the broader issues, um, related to the restoration and separate litigation. Um, and I, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that it is very important, uh, for everybody to understand what regard to this case. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Dominguez, or any other commissioners with questions, motions, whatever?
Madam Chair, this is David Cyper.
Yes, Commissioner Cyper.
I would like to make a motion, uh, that the proposed settlement agreement, uh, be approved.
Commissioner Hutchinson, second.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, is there any further debate that the commission would like on this motion? All right, I'm not hearing any or seeing any, uh, mute button flash, so Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote for us on Commissioner Cyper's motion, as seconded by Commissioner Hutchinson? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Beginning with Commissioner Cangalaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Serton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Muscharafi?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Pappen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyper?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tinan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Madam Chair Pruitt?
Yes.
Madam Chair, your vote is unanimous.
Thank you, and, uh, thank you everyone for moving us through on that. Um, Mr. Atencio, I believe you all have submitted a stipulated order for both of us. Both of you have approved an order for me to sign. Um, I'm gonna have to ask you, Mr. Atencio, to work with, uh, Counsel, uh, Dominguez, on an amended stipulated order on your prior Act Me settlement agreement for the, the vote of the commission with that change to it. So if you could get that, perhaps first to Counsel, Counsel Sanchez, and then he can get that to me. Are you on the line, Mr. Sanchez?
I am again. Uh, the, the code that Alan had given me, the access code was incorrect. Uh, I, I have, uh, and again, I'm, I'm really sorry because I'm obviously just jumping in and didn't have the benefit of the earlier discussion. Uh, the question I had was, and I, I lost connectivity with you these office, was regarding paragraph fourteen, as I recall, in the proposed settlement agreement that was submitted on July, uh, thirteenth. And that language-
What matter are you speaking about? Are you speaking about, uh, twenty dash O eight Cannon, or are you speaking about twenty dash O four Act Me?
I'm talking about Cannon.
All right.
The, and, and again, I, I'm sorry, we don't have the packet available to me, but as I recall, paragraph fourteen of the proposed settlement agreement, uh, the language, as I recall, uh, references twenty point one point three point twenty two subsection B one. And the language in the regulation says, "The stipulated final order shall include all terms and conditions defined by the party, that have been done, and shall state that for purposes of the proceeding, the respondent admits the jurisdictional allegations of the compliance order." My recollection is that paragraph says that they admit to the jurisdictional allegation of the agreement and consentedly specify with refer to the compliance order. That language in paragraph fourteen does not comply despite the fact that it references, uh, subsection B one does not comply with the actual language in subsection B one.
Counselor, the commission has-
Counselor, do you think so?
The, the commission has voted to approve this, but I guess you are suggesting that we reopen the matter and, uh, revisit your belated questions. I will give the attorneys a chance to, uh, respond.
Well, it's hard to belate it because Alan had not given you the correct access number, but, uh, I will leave it up to the chair to decide whether the point I raised is a sufficient merit to reopen it or not.
Um, NMD staff fashion aside, all access codes are on the agenda and in a variety of places. Uh, if there's any change during a meeting, someone who's trying to do multiple things can sometimes, uh, go awry. Uh, I will give Mr. Atencio and Major Coon an opportunity to respond to your comments, and then I will entertain, uh, any motion any commissioner feels obliged to make. Mr. Atencio and Major Coon?
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, uh, thank you for the opportunity to respond. Uh, I, I don't have, um, the, the regulations directly in front of me that would, that speak to this, but, um, generally, my understanding is if a matter were to be reopened, um, a commissioner who was a part of that proceeding would be the appropriate one to reopen that matter. Uh, I think while Mr. Sanchez is pointing to paragraph fifteen, uh, there are places throughout the agreement where those admissions are made, uh, in particular. Uh, paragraph thirteen of the settlement agreement makes, uh, such, uh, admission, uh, that says that despite, their respondent does not admit to any of the allegations contained within or suggested by the ACO. Entry into this settlement agreement shall not constitute admission of liability in any administrative or judicial proceeding. Nor shall evidence of settlement be admissible in any such proceeding, except for the proceedings to enforce this agreement related to that final order of the commission. Um, and, and in conjunction with, uh, with the, the whole of settlement agreement, I think that those admissions are, are made. Uh, if Counsel feels that that is not sufficient, I mean, there's plenty of space in the stipulated final order, um, similar to, uh, what we had discussed with the head documentator and Mr. Dominguez, we can certainly add, um, explicit language and even quote, uh, verbatim twenty point one point three point two two B, uh, if that would be acceptable to Counsel.
Madam Chair, Major Coon, there, uh, according to simply, uh, the United States' position that there's nothing in that language that would render the agreement, uh, nullified or otherwise legally insufficient, uh, we would recommend that it be approved as written because, just as Mr. Atencio pointed out, reading the agreement itself, uh, as well as the attachments in their entire context, uh, the, the most logical conclusion is that the, uh, jurisdictional allegations have been conceded. Uh, and if I have to do that on the record on behalf of my client, I'd be happy to do that, uh, that might satisfy the commission's concerns to the extent there are any, uh, over-
All right, I'm not really sure procedurally what our next step is. Uh, do I, Mr. Sanchez, are you thinking I need to take the vote on, uh, whether the commission wants to reopen their approval of the settlement?
Uh, Madam Chair, as I said, the paragraph fourteen, and I've been able to since pull it up, does not comply with the specific language of twenty point one point three twenty two. Uh, the settlement agreement says that they, the respondent admits the jurisdictional allegations of the agreement. Uh, the regulation speaks to respondent admits the jurisdictional allegations of the compliance order, that's quite different, and also consent to the reading specified in the compliance of the clear-
Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Sanchez, you've made your point. My question is, do we need to vote on whether we want to reopen the settlement agreement we just approved?
Yes.
All right, commissioners, does anyone have a motion?
Madam Chair, Howard Hutchinson?
Commissioner- Please proceed.
Being a party to the initial vote, I, uh, move that we reopen the discussion.
Do I have a second for that? Okay, going once, going twice. Commissioners, uh, want to second that motion? Hearing no second, Commissioner Hutchinson, I believe your motion dies for lack of a se- second, and I believe, uh, that means the commission's vote stands and we move on to the next matter on the agenda. Does anyone have any different advice for me on that?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Uh, yeah, um, thank you, commissioners. Uh, yeah, um, thank you Commissioners.
All right, um. Uh- I'm sorry, was someone trying to say something? All right, the next matter on our agenda is number seven, Water Quality Control Commission, number twenty dash oh seven R, a public hearing in proposed revisions to twenty point seven point five NMAC wastewater facility construction loans. Uh, the only party in this matter is the Environment Department, and their attorney is, again, Mr. Christopher Atencio. Uh, Mr. Atencio, are you ready to proceed on this matter?
Uh, Madam Chair, I am ready. I believe my clients are on the line here, uh, should be ready to proceed, uh, at the Commission's pleasure.
All right, um, I would like to say that, uh, in the interest of time, I do not, well, I have a version of the agenda that predicts four hours for this. I really expect that, uh, the Department can get its summary presentation completed in twenty to thirty minutes. I'm gonna ask your witnesses not to read their testimony into the record, that that testimony was filed well in advance, and thank you for that. And, uh, I am going to assume that Commissioners have read the testimony. So I would like, uh, to give you, Mr. Atencio, the opportunity for a brief opening statement, let your witness, uh, make a brief summary of her testimony, and, uh, then, uh, you can give me your exhibits to accept into the record, and we will move forward then with Commissioner questions. Does that sound? I'm, I was the designated hearing officer for this one, so I'm gonna proceed, uh, with the hearing direction. We are recording this matter both by WebEx video and staff is recording it by our, using our audio recording. Those will be available for public review after this meeting. Uh, any comments or concerns about, uh, what I've just outlined as the procedure for this hearing? All right, then, Mr. Atencio, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Uh, I think, uh, Madam Chair, your outline of the preferred procedures in this, um, that was a lot of my opening statement in terms of requested how this would go. Uh, but I just wanna say good morning and thank you for the time to present this matter to you. With me this morning are Judy Cale and Rhonda Holderman, uh, the Department's Construction Programs Bureau. In a few moments, Ms. Holderman will provide direct testimony as to the Department's proposed changes. Uh, and by way of being officious in this, uh, Ms. Holderman will provide a summary of her direct testimony, uh, prior to us moving that into the record. Uh, Ms. Cale will be available for policy and Bureau-wide questions, uh, should the Commission have those. The Department is asking you this morning to adopt its proposed revisions to twenty point seven point five NMAC to better help the Bureau manage the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Um, so if it's okay with you, Madam Hearing Officer, I would, um, ask, could I be allowed to ask a few brief questions of Ms. Holderman, uh, and a summary of her testimony? And then the Department would offer its witnesses, uh, the panel, to answer whatever questions that the Commission may have.
That sounds fine, Mr. Atencio, but we do need to swear in those witnesses. And I don't think I gave, uh, Commission Administrator, Ms. Strawn, the usual lovely script for doing that, so I will ask the, uh, two witnesses, Ms. Holderman and Cale, to please raise their right hand. And, uh, please swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead with your witnesses, Mr. Atencio. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm forgetting the question for, uh, Ms. Holderman. Would you please state your name for the record?
Rhonda Holderman.
What is your educational background?
I have a bachelor's in business administration and MBA from Eastern Mexico University in-
Who is your employer?
New Mexico Environment Department, Construction Programs Bureau.
Uh, Ms. Holderman, what is your position at the Construction Programs Bureau?
I'm the financial manager in charge of loans and grants.
And what do your duties consist of as a financial manager?
I oversee the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, the Rural Infrastructure Program, and legislative capital outlay that is awarded, um, to the Environment Department for environmental infrastructure.
Ms. Holderman, did you prefile your resume in this matter?
Yes, it is, uh, NMD Exhibit Three.
Ms. Holderman, do you prefile written technical testimony in this matter?
Yes, it is NMD Exhibit One.
And are the Department's proposed amendments, uh, attached to those files?
Uh, yes, uh, they are in NMD Exhibit Two.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Holderman. Could you please provide a brief summary of your prefiled testimony?
Uh, yes, so what we are proposing and what we're requesting is that, um, the W2CC allows CPB, Construction Programs Bureau, to, uh, set rates, interest rates for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund moving forward, uh, with annual, um, communication to the Water Quality Control Commission about those rates. Uh, we are requesting that, uh, we remove the subsidy restrictions in the rule, uh, so that we can allow subsidy, uh, for all qualified projects. Uh, both of the, uh, interest rate and the subsidy, uh, we have provided documentation as to why these changes are needed, as to how they will help, uh, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, uh, hopefully move more money, sign more loans, and therefore, uh, better allow us to protect, uh, water quality in New Mexico, um, through those projects. Uh, we are also requesting, uh, that the Commission approve a simplified priority ranking system. Uh, that system is required by the EPA Environmental Protection Agency, um, has a process for us to evaluate, um, projects. So those three items are what are in our testimony today.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Holderman. And just to clarify, I believe the priority ranking system approval, uh, is that, uh, on the Commission's agenda for the next item?
It is, it is the next item on there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Holderman, do you have any changes to make to your prefiled testimony?
No, we do not.
Do you adopt the prefiled testimony in this matter?
Yes, I do.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Holderman. Uh, Madam Hearing Officer, I have no other direct questions for, uh, Ms. Holderman or Ms. Cale. I would move now NMD Exhibits One to Fifteen into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Atencio. Those exhibits are all admitted. I don't hear, there's no other party that could object to them. I look them over, and they seem fine. Thank you. So they are all admitted.
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. At this time, uh, we have no further direct questions, and would present our witnesses as a panel for questions.
Thank you. Uh, so at this time, I will move to Commissioners and see if they have any questions about the proposed rule revisions.
Madam Chair, Howard Hutchinson?
Yes, Mr., Commissioner Hutchinson, please proceed.
I was, uh, just wondering if I'm looking at the correct, uh, document. Uh, would this be for the, uh, Exhibit Two, the, the actual revision of the rule?
Yes.
Okay, and then I have, um, a couple of points to bring forward. Um, the twenty point seven point five point thirteen, uh, should be a, I believe there should be a space between financial assistance and, uh, space between assistance and items. And then, under the revised section, you have the strikeout, and then a underline, which is on page four. I'm just making sure I understand that correctly. Just that, uh, that line that begins local authority interest rates becomes item H. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. Uh, any other Commissioner with questions? Well, while you're about that, I have a couple of questions. Um, the, the current section H in twenty point seven point five point fourteen allows, uh, a lower hardship rate for low-income communities. And instead, there's new language added stating that the Department shall determine, quote, "local authority interest rates" and "interest rate conditions," unquote. Is this the same thing as the special loan rate for a low-income community?
Yes, I think in, uh, the, one of the exhibits, you'll see there is a new grid of what we are proposing. We are still proposing that there be a total of, um, three hardship rates. So the two point three seven five will say the same as a base rate, and that will apply to private entities only. Um, the one percent rate will be for entities that qualify with a PCI of equal to or above, uh, the New Mexico state average. And then below that is the hardship rate, and those will be two hardship rates, point five percent interest and zero percent. Zero percent is in statute, so that's not changing. Point five percent will be for any entity that is, has a PCI below the average state PCI based on the most current U.S. Census Bureau data.
And Ms. Holderman, uh, for those, for those who are not super facile with your, in technical terms, PCI is for capital income?
That is correct.
Thank you. So I'm gonna ask you to just step back from the specifics of the rules and your calculations, and could you, because I gotta say, these, I'm, I'm not that familiar with the details of these rules, even though I honestly did read everything as recently as yesterday. So I'm gonna ask you, just in the big picture way, can you explain to me and reassure me how that we, uh, you and the Commission have been able to do special interest rates for challenged communities in New Mexico before, and how you will now be able to also do that? And whether there's gonna be just a standard tier of rates you're gonna be able to do, or whether you're gonna do a special rate for each community based on its specific challenges?
Okay, so in the past, uh, the rule has contained our interest rates, and, and that was it. We followed what the, that said in rule and apply it to, um, borrowers. Now what we are requesting is that we take it out of the rule and we set it in policy. And we do that, it will basically be the same, will have the same format, and we'll explain how we are doing it, and, and the metrics that we use will be in our policy, um, and on our website, they'll be publicly available. Um, but they will be able to be changed more quickly because they are in policy should financial conditions change that require us to move our interest rates. Right now, our interest rates are hard to change because this process is not agile, um, and we are looking to make it more agile. As, I, Chairwoman, as you know, we have a lot of money, and we are working to find ways to, uh, get our money to where it's needed because it's, it's, it's not beneficial to have it just sitting there. So we think by bringing, uh, by having our interest rates in a way that allows us to be more agile with changing them, that we will be able to move it around, uh, move it around a little bit more.
Thank you, that was the kind of big picture I was looking for, I appreciate that. So the other question that I have in sort of a big picture way is, um, the protections described in the statement of reasons that you all submitted as your Exhibit A, I thought, but Mr. Atencio called them numbers, maybe it was to your petition, on pages three, four, seems to discuss eligibility for projects and lower rates, um, based on population numbers, not necessarily a lower interest rate for low-income communities. So would you please explain how you, this system you're asking us to approve allows you to take into consideration both the size of a community and its, uh, income levels?
Okay, so I, there's, there's a couple of things there, um, and Chris, I'm, I'm not sure, we may be mixing a little bit of the priority, the, the next scheduled item. Um, but to address the question, uh, Madam Chair, um, I think there's two different ways that we are addressing population. We are, we are requesting to remove, uh, that subsidy grant, uh, can only be dispersed, can only be offered and approved to entities that are defined as rural. So grant is that portion that does not have to be paid back. So we can make funding packages that are loan-grant packages, uh, but right now, we can only offer the grant portion to entities that meet the definition of rural. So we would like to be able to offer, um, grant to projects that are worthy regardless of their population size. Uh, the Clean Water Act does not, nor does the Wastewater Facility Construction Loan Act, um, require a population, um, limitation. It's, it's not addressed. So that is in our rule, and it does not behoove us to have it there because it, it limits what we can award. Um, additionally, well, I think that that's what you're, that's what you're referring to in this, in this section, uh, in this agenda item.
Well, I- Do you have your question? Yeah, kind of, I just wanna make sure, while I appreciate that, that you want the flexibility, um, I wanna make sure that you can take into consideration both the size of- population and also per capita income, that both of those go into the equation. Is that correct?
Yes, part of the, part of what we're required to do with the Clean Water Fund through EPA, through the Environmental Protection Agency, is apply affordability criteria. Affordability criteria was required in 2014 through the Water Resources Reform Development Act, known as WARDU. And through that, we look at population size, and we look at income, and we look at user fees. So, we still take those into account through the affordability criteria. The PCI is addressed through the way interest rates are applied, and will continue to be so. And then we will be able to evaluate the project itself and the water quality benefits.
Madam Chair, if I may add a little bit of additional information? So, what Rhonda was talking about with the affordability criteria, the affordability criteria is the set of criteria that she just discussed that was, it's required through the WARDU Act with EPA. We go through that evaluation process where it has the population and the PCI and some other information, and we award points. And so, the highest number of points in the affordability criteria are the communities that we look at for awarding grants to first. And when I say awarding grants, you always keep in mind it's a loan grant, there is no such thing as just grants on the Clean Water SRF. So, that affordability criteria comes into play when we are, when we are figuring out who to award subsidy to first. So, that's where that population comes in to help the smaller communities. They'll get more points in the affordability criteria, so they rise higher in that criteria so that we look at them for awarding subsidy first. The reason that we wanna take out the rural criteria, as Rhonda said, is even after we go through the whole priority list and we award all of the subsidy that we have, sometimes we have money left over that somebody, nobody takes. So, rather than let that money sit, we would rather award it to a project that's needed, even if it's a community that's not a rural community. So, this is just enabling us to try and get more loans out there, get more projects built, giving us the flexibility that we hopefully can utilize to get more of the money out the door and get more water quality projects.
Okay, thank you. And just because we do have so many small rural communities in this state, and, you know, in my mind, those systems have the fewest options in terms of being able to pay back loans or to raise money for loans, because they just don't have as many people. But what you're saying is that the scoring system would ensure that communities in that situation are essentially weighted to get a higher score, to make sure they get that money first, and it's only money left over that is gonna go to other types of communities that might have more options, but we still wanna get this money in use to help communities.
Is that right? That's correct, Madam Chair. And there are, you know, we have tiny little communities that we work with, and I'll use Fort Sumner as an example, where we basically, we give them about a five percent loan and a ninety-five percent grant to get their project done. But even, even at those kind of ratios, there are times when communities won't take it, they don't want any loan, or they literally cannot afford any loan. So, we are left with money on the table at times, so we would like to be able to utilize those ones.
And we love the idea of that money getting out to our New Mexico communities to put to good use, so thank you for that. I think my last question is, would one of you please explain, just in general, how the next item on the agenda, the priority ranking system, that's a base interest rate determination, how does that fit with this agenda item, the rule change?
Okay, I'll take that. Okay, the priority ranking system is the system by which we evaluate all applications that come through for clean water money, the applications. And so, we are looking at simplifying it so that we are awarding the most amount of points that we can, so that we are not making it hard on applicants. I mean, we've got the money, we just don't wanna make it hard, and that we can evaluate for the best water quality project. So, the things that are described in the priority ranking system allow us to evaluate a wider range of projects, not just wastewater, but non-traditional funding that is more non-point source. The Clean Water State Revolving Fund can fund so much, and it is so flexible. And in the past, we have really been in a corner for a lot of reasons, but now we are just trying to move out of that, broaden what we can score, make it make more sense, because the old system does not make sense with what we can do now. This has really changed with the 2014 changes in WARDU. So, that's what fits into this. I mean, it is very impartial of how we evaluate applicants and make offers, and ultimately award funding, and hopefully get this money out the door to worthy projects.
Okay, and WARDU is Water Resources Reform and Development Act?
That's correct.
So, when your rule change proposes, and instead of a lot of things being locked into a rule, which requires public notice and a long notice time period, and then getting on the Commission agenda, and then going through all the long process of a rule change, and instead you wanna do it by policy, is the next agenda item that policy?
No, the next agenda item is different. The current rule states that the Water Quality Control Commission must approve the priority ranking system. And so, that is what the next agenda item is.
Okay.
So, we aren't changing that.
So, what? Go ahead.
We are, we are requesting to change that we take the interest rates out of the rule as they are in their rule now, and those be put into policy, and that we set rates by policy.
Okay, so, where's the policy? Do you have a draft one, and will you be ready to go with it as soon as the Commission gets the Commission approves the rule change? So, Chris, can I get you the help out there as far as the?
Sure. Madam Chair, if I may, there is some interplay between this item and the next agenda item, but there are separate issues. As Ms. Holderman pointed out, what the department's asking for in its rulemaking is removing the prohibition on subsidies to, for rural, rural communities, as well as moving the, setting the interest rates from rule into policy. The second agenda item actually says there's a separate item of the priority ranking system, which by regulation is required to have the PCC approval. Within that, however, is also an approval of an interest rate for this fiscal year. Now, I understand it's confusing, I had to go over it quite a few times myself to make sure I understood, but I think part of that request is really a creature of the administrative process and the rulemaking process. Even if the Commission were to approve the department's request to move interest rates from rule to policy, the department would not have that authority until that rule change became effective. And the State Rules Act, that that change won't become effective until it's published in the New Mexico Register. So, rather than wait that, rather than wait that additional time for the department to be able to do this, the department's requesting advantage in the item, it's the next one, for the Commission one last time to set a base interest rate for this fiscal year. And then, the fiscal years following, the department would be in a position to do that by policy, should the Commission approve the rule change that's for today.
Okay, so, the reassurance I'm looking for, and I think I sorta just heard that, is that if we approve this rule change, there's not gonna be a pause in awarding any grants and loans while the agency works on and adopts the policy? Because the next agenda item fills in for that, and the policy part doesn't start till the next fiscal year?
That is correct. It is our intent to, if the, if it's approved, it's our intent to solicit for more applications and to promote them, and to really try to move forward with getting that money out. It will also allow us to refinance current loans that are in place, which could be very important right now, because communities are hurting because of proceeds taxed, because of all kinds of things. So, if we can lower their payments through refinancing, that could really help some communities that have already borrowed with us.
Thank you, that sounds like a great plan. Sometimes, people complain that they wanna stick with rulemaking processes, because there is a built-in and absolutely required public participation process. And by moving to policy, some complain or are concerned that there could be then unilateral agency action without the opportunity for public input or participation. So, I would ask you all to comment on that, and your thoughts about public outreach and involvement in the development of that policy.
The first thing that I would say is that it is not part of the Clean Water Act that it be a water, that interest rates be determined by the Water Quality Control Commission or be approved by them. So, in looking at what other states do, and this program is in all states and Puerto Rico, it is not something that is approved by, in their commissions, almost all of them are set by policy. In addition, we are looking at NMFA, which has these drinking water state revolving funds in New Mexico, and they set their interest rates by policy. So, this would put us more in alignment with that program. Also, we are, the intent is, and it's agreed to, we would report annually as to what the interest rates are to the Commission. We are not trying to bypass it, we are just trying to make it a more agile process so that we can do this more easily.
Madam Chair, if I may add just some additional thoughts? You know, setting interest rates is sort of an interesting thing, because it's not really the kind of business as WCC does, as an environmental business. It's not, we're not setting regulations. And so, giving us the ability to be more nimble and to be able to change the rate as the market fluctuates, and as part of the next agenda item, we supplied a chart that shows what the interest rates are nationwide for this program, and we're really high. And that just seems crazy in a state like New Mexico, you know, with the rural population and the PCI that we have. So, it's taken us so long to get to this point where we can lower rates. It's really putting us at a disadvantage as far as competing with other programs. NMFA has their Public Project Revolving Fund, that they can also fund these kind of projects, and their interest rates are way lower. So, and, you know, what we're trying to do is help communities in New Mexico. And I would not anticipate that we would ever be thinking about raising rates unless, you know, something crazy happens in this state and in this country over the next ten, twenty years. But, you know, in fact, we're trying to move money, and as I'm sure you're aware, the legislature often talks to us about, why do you have all this money and why aren't you funding it? And so, this is, this is what we're trying to do, we're trying to make it easier to lower the rates, and set them where, you know, communities can afford these projects and get more water quality projects built. So, we, you know, as Rhonda said, we will be reporting to the Commission on an annual basis, and it's not an attempt to hide the ball or anything, it's just an attempt to help out the state.
When the NMFA does its interest rates by policy, is there any public involvement? Or is it simply an internal calculation?
It's just an internal calculation. And PPRF is based on bond rates, they sell bonds to finance that program, and then their drinking water SRF. They publish it on their website, but there's no, there's no public participation in the rate set.
Okay, and you guys in CPB are some of our most acronym prone programs. Would you please remind everybody what PPRF and SRF?
Okay, PPRF, Public Project Revolving Fund, is a loan program run by the New Mexico Finance Authority, and it can fund everything from fire trucks to wastewater, you know, plants to drinking water, basically anything a public entity might need, lots of schools and all that sort of thing. SRF, State Revolving Fund, they have the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, we have the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, clean water being an acronym for wastewater. We make it clean.
Thank you, that's all the questions that I have. So, I'm gonna see if anyone else on the Commission has questions they would like to ask, or any motions they wanna make.
I'm Madam Chair, Larry Dominguez. A kind of a follow-up question slash comment, I think your question regarding public participation is well-taken. I think anybody that's worked for a state agency for any length of time, that attempts to do some stuff by policy versus regulation gets beat up from one side or the other. So, I fully understand that aspect. As I view this and understand all the parameters here, I think the only time that we would get kickback is if the communities are adversely affected by a change in the rate, which, as it's currently set, the communities can't get their hands on the money that they need. So, there is nothing but an upside to this requested change. So, I think, to finish off that concern about public participation, if at any time down the road that the public feels like they are having an adverse effect, I'm sure they will be back in front of us and we can address it accordingly. But, the initial needs right now... But the, the initial needs right now is giving money in the hands of communities that need the funding. And therefore, uh, I think there is, what's being asked for provides accountability, but it provides that flexibility and leeway in order to get money in the hands of those that, that need it. So I think from that aspect, there's, there's really not a downside other than the potential perception that we're doing something by policy versus regulation. But with that, I, I, you covered the questions I had. Um, I would say we could move into a motion, but I also think you may need to actually wrap up the formal hearing before the commission moves into deliberation slash motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ask you any other questions, Commissioner?
Madam Chair, David Safer.
Please proceed, Commissioner Safer.
I want to take this time to applaud staff springing up, I think it's long overdue. As to the question of public input, public comment in the future, um, the way I view it is, uh, the rates are relative to what's going on in today's current markets. And, and today, um, we, these, these opportunities, low interest opportunities and grants are, are really, they really do need adjustment. So again, I applaud staff. But if, if we're concerned at all about, um, the opportunity for public input, what I understand is that we would have an annual report as to what the balances are and how the interest rates are going and kind of see how the fund is doing. Um, could, could that incorporate also, or give an opportunity at that point for the commission or the public that attend the commission meetings with that on the agenda, the opportunity at that time? So annually, I mean, I sure, sure I'm not interested in doing a in-depth review every year, but, uh, if we ever return to some ridiculous numbers such as, uh, eighteen percent inflation rates like, like we had in the seventies, it'd really be nice, uh, to have the authority to, to visit that, um, during the annual reports. I don't know what that was described, but it's just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you see the review, did you have any comments about? No, okay. Commissioner Simmons?
I'm struggling with my new button. Um, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, I just had a, a follow-up question about the public comment. I presume that this went out, uh, it was posted, I saw it a number of different ways. Was there any comment on this that came back or questions or concerns from the public on this matter?
Um, if you're asking me, uh, staff at the Environment Department in the Office of Public Supervision did not make me aware of any public comment came in on this at all. I'll let you speak in just a minute, um, Ms. Cale. Uh, interestingly, you know, um, this, this item I think did go out, uh, to be on a July agenda, which then we had to cancel a public meeting for. So there has been an enormous amount of time for a public comment on this matter. But I'll let NMED answer if they've had any comments.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Simmons. We had a, we had a letter from, uh, city of Albuquerque or Albuquerque Burnley County Water Utility Authority in favor of this, um, it, because...
Who was Albuquerque Burnley County?
Obviously, they want money, they want super money and, and the ability to receive some subsidy if, if we have subsidy available for them.
Was that letter to the commission or to the?
Rhonda, do you know?
I believe it was to the commission, I, I believe, I believe it was received, uh, through the commission and forwarded, um, to Cody, I believe.
Does anyone on that OPF staff know if it, where that letter is and whether it was posted or included in the records, does matter?
This is Alan, and the, the letter was received, um, by Cody, and I can pull it up for your review and share the screen if you would like. Um, it was, uh, dated July tenth.
Was it, was it posted to the website?
Uh, that I don't know, I can check.
Well, why don't you go ahead and put it on the screen now, and we'll just give everybody the opportunity to see it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, um, my reason for asking the question is just kind of getting to the point of the comments here about how, um, you know, the public may be not having an opportunity to provide comments on this, um, if it pushes to policy rather than rule. Um, if there's no comment, then I think that shows that there's perhaps not a huge interest in, um, voicing a lot of those concerns and, and a good reason to go ahead and proceed with changing, uh, this rule.
Thank you.
And I'm, so, news gone, whole screen has shifted.
Thank you, do you have any other questions?
Well, I, I had a, a follow-up, um, kind of slightly unrelated, and it may relate more to item eight. Um, but I, I am curious, uh, with two things, both, uh, who are the reviewers on this? Is it, is it, uh, just NMED staff, or is there a broader community that reviews these? And then the second question is, um, getting to the, um, the kinds of applicants that are seeking these loans, and if they are capable of, I was reading through the ranking system in particular, and noticing, uh, a lot of technical, uh, details needed. And I'm curious if the communities most at need have the technical support to, uh, complete the, the requirements for some of these, uh, particular loan opportunities. Um, so those are kind of two broader questions that may be related more to item eight, if you wanted to address them later.
Madam Chair, what's your pleasure? Should I answer now or later?
Aren't you asked for now, please?
Okay. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Simmons. So who are the applicants for this fund? Um, basically, it can be any, uh, public entity or private entity. We changed, um, through the WTC a few years ago, make private entities eligible as well as public because of the WADA changes, the Water Resources and Recovery and Development Act changes to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, uh, program. We've had a number of private entities apply, we have not funded any thus far. Private entities are not eligible for subsidy, um, and they would be at the highest interest rate of two point three seven five percent. Uh, we have trouble security, figuring out the security on the private loans, so that's why we haven't been successful in those thus far, but we keep plugging away at it. For the small communities, like for instance, the Fort Sumner's of the world that I mentioned, um, we hold their hand through every step of this. They can apply online, they can apply, um, on paper. They can call us and tell us what their project is, and we'll fill out the application for them. Rhonda and her staff, um, will do, you know, anything we folks need. Back in the olden days when we could actually go out places, you know, we can go out to the communities and help them. We also have a staff of technical engineers that, um, also help the communities on the technical side. So we walk them through whatever the processes that they need to go through. If they need a preliminary engineering report to figure out their project, which Fort Sumner needed, um, so we fund that first. So we, uh, funded their preliminary engineering report and design first. And then once they get that completed and they figure out exactly what they need to do, then we can fund the actual construction of their wastewater treatment plant and also some sewer line work that they need. So we, we really, um, you know, we, we will do anything that needs to be done to help anybody apply for this money and, um, for any of us folks that have worked with our engineers or with, with our financial staff, we really are, you know, available all the time to help people and, and get them successfully through projects. And we've done a lot of tiny little communities, uh, over the years. So if, if they don't understand something, we're, we're right there to help them and talk them through it and, and, and help them figure it out. So it's a little hard to do something like this without some of the technical mumbo jumbo, as people like to call it. Um, but, but we do everything we possibly can to help.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Howard Hutchinson.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Uh, I'm, I'm kind of a stickler on public participation. And I, I see that the proposed, uh, rule change does shift this to a policy decision within the department. Um, going back to Commissioner Dominguez's comments, the only remedy that I perceive is if the public interests are adversely affected would be to come back to the commission to change the rule. Um, but on the other hand, I also see the need to get this changed and better streamlined so that communities can get the funding that they need as well. I, I'm not sure that my remedy would be something that we would have fun with, uh, but, um, I, I hate to see us pushed back into that position with only receiving a report, uh, at the beginning of the year detailing what the department's decisions were on interest rates. So I, I've got mixed feelings about this, but I think that I'm generally in favor of, with going forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. Any other comments or questions from commissioners before I close the hearing to the rumbling of many stomachs?
Yeah, I'm sorry if I may, Mr. Tencio. Um, we, we also have on the line, uh, Rebecca Ruth, the Division Director for the Water Protection Division. Uh, if you agree with the commission, um, I think she'd be willing to, uh, provide a comment or if you'd like, uh, make that, make that into one testimony if you'd like, uh, to provide a little bit more perspective on that.
Uh, yes. Uh, Director Ruth, do you swear that anything you share with us will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. One, one thing I, I've been thinking of as listening to the conversation about public participation and this, this proposed shift to, from regulation to policy or setting interest rates, that I wanted to, uh, be sure to emphasize for the Commissioners that part of our thinking internally in, in preparing this, this proposed regulatory revision that's in front of you today. And that is, that the, as, as some Commissioners have mentioned, the hypothetical public, um, opposition to future policy-based interest rate changes would be if communities would be adversely impacted by those changes. Adverse impact would likely be associated with the department's increasing rate, for example, uh, principally. And one of the, a- aside from the fact that you're hearing from the people who are in these positions today who are reinforcing that our goal is to lower interest rates, keep rates at or below market rate, to move money into communities, that is not just something that those of us who are in the positions today believe in and adhere to when we think about managing this program. Um, I believe that over time, no matter who is sitting in Chief Cale's chair or Rhonda Holderman's chair as Financial Manager, or my chair as Division Director, we will, uh, as a department, have many external, uh, incentives to continue to keep rates at a level that moves money into communities, that, that facilitates more loans. It is incumbent on the department to keep this revolving loan fund revolving, to keep loans going out, to keep dollars going out into communities. And that's something that is built in to how this program works. And I'm, I'm making this point to emphasize that, um, there are built-in factors, incentives, and pressure points to how this program works that I, I strongly believe will keep the program moving in a direction that is, um, that communities support. Because if communities were to not support the direction, then that would mean they're not going to apply for loans between the department and then getting what we need to get out of the program as well. So it's, it's a, a self-reinforcing principle that I expect we'll see play out, um, if the, the changes are made as proposed, uh, by the department. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ruth. Uh, last call for comments, questions from Commissioners, uh, before I move to closing by Mr. Tencio. All right, Mr. Tencio, would you like to wrap up?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm sure members of the commission, um, I think it's had a chance to, to offer a brief closing. You've heard this morning and this afternoon, uh, from, uh, Ms. Cale, Ms. Holderman, and Director Ruth, uh, regarding, um, how this program runs, how the program is designed, uh, and ultimately, uh, the goal of impacting and benefiting, uh, the public and water quality in New Mexico. Uh, the department appreciates all the questions, uh, and the commission bringing its expertise, um, the variety of commission members to help us to make this program, uh, function in a, in a more streamlined manner. And with that, and, and based on that testimony and the exhibits that the department filed, uh, it respectfully request that the commission adopts the proposed changes to twenty point seven point five. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tencio. Okay, I'm officially taking off my, uh, hearing officer hat, but I'm closing this hearing, wrapping up the record, taking off the hearing officer hat, putting back on the commission chair hat, uh, and asking Commissioners to, uh, start their deliberation or make a motion on the proposed rule.
Um, Madam Chair, Larry Dominguez. Um, just to keep things moving forward and, um, not to interrupt discussion, but to help with discussions, I would make a motion that the commission approve the proposed revisions to twenty point seven point five in MAC, including the dramatical corrections made by Commissioner Hutchinson.
Howard Hutchinson, second.
Any discussion, Commissioners? All right, in an abundance of caution, I just want to... All right. In an abundance of caution, I just want to check in with Mr. Atencio. Did I accept all your exhibits into the record?
Yes, Madam Chair. I believe you accepted any of the exhibits. Wanted to check to ensure the extent of our notice of evidence to present a technical testimony.
Correct. Sorry, I didn't remember. Just wanted to check. All right, Commissioners, comments, questions, amendments? Is that stomachs I hear growling? All right. Ms. Jones, would you please read the roll for us to vote on this matter, please?
Beginning with Commissioner Condolario.
Yes.
Commissioner Serton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Muscharoffy?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader? Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Seifer?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Madam Chair, per.
Yes.
Madam Chair, your vote is unanimous.
Thank you. And thank you all for your patience working our way through this matter. I think it's time for a lunch break. Let me first say that apparently there has been technical difficulties with our Red Act links and posting by telephone. Apparently, there is a new telephone access code that staff has obtained from our IT department. We're going to post that on the screen during our lunch break so that when people check back in after lunch break, hopefully, they will be able to get in. Staff, is there anything, any other guidance you want to give on that before we break for lunch?
Madam Chair, I think, this is Alan. No, I think you're good. I have already set up a screenshot that will be showing the posted new phone entry code. And we will also send out an email during the lunch break to all commission members, just in case someone gets cut off, so that everybody's got access to it. Commission members and commission council.
All right. But can you correct it or post it somehow on the website for members of the public that want to get into the meeting?
That we're working, excuse me, Madam Chair, that we're working on as well.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Well, it's just about 12:30. I'd like to limit us to a 45-minute lunch break unless I hear loud objections from people who need more time. Not hearing any. We are going to take a recess for 45 minutes. I look forward to seeing you all at 1:15. Thank you.
Conversations including indicating we have some other people back. I'm still seeing a lot of blank screens that used to have pictures of commissioners. So maybe we'll give people a couple more minutes to reconvene. Oh, now I'm seeing lots of people. So Ms. Jones, would you like to read the role for us? Let's see, one eighteen, let's see if we have commissioners back from lunch yet.
Okay, got it. Okay, beginning with Commissioner Candelaria.
Yes, uh, here.
All right. Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Dominguez.
Here.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Here.
Commissioner McWilliams.
I'm here.
Commissioner Musa Rafi.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Catherine.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Rader.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Timmons.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Madam Chair Pruitt.
I am here.
All President accounted for.
Thank you. Do we have Commission Counsel on the line?
I am here.
Okay, good deal. Well, then we are back in business for the September eighth Water Quality Control Commission meeting. We are now at item number eight on our agenda. Request for approval of the priority ranking system and base interest rate determination for FY twenty one. I believe that did get a docket number. Can, uh, one of the OPX staff refresh my memory what that is, please?
Checking right now.
Madam Chair, this is Alan. That is WQC C twenty dash fifty two.
Fantastic, thank you. Thank you, Alan. So, uh, on that one, I believe, uh, we have the same cast of characters. Uh, Mr. Atencio, would you like to proceed?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good afternoon. Thank you again, uh, for the chance to read this, and I'd be before, uh, before you on the commission regarding the department's request for approval of waste water facility construction loan fund project priority ranking system and interest rates for fiscal year twenty twenty one. And you may recall from previous agenda item that there was some discussion on this matter. And, uh, this is a, a point that requires commission approval, but it's not a rulemaking. Um, we, the department is just, uh, presenting this matter for, again, for your approval, but not through that, uh, more formal process. Uh, so, understanding that you have a extensive docket today, uh, and scheduled through tomorrow, uh, I'll keep my introduction brief and turn it over to Ms. Holden in here in a minute, uh, to just provide a brief summary and then open it up for questions. Uh, so pursuant to seventy four, six, eight, seven, B, and twenty point seven, point five, twelve, the, uh, M N Act, uh, the department's requesting that the commission approve the proposed project priority ranking system that we provided as attachment one, uh, to its middle. Uh, and then pursuant to twenty point seven, point five, point fourteen G, the department requests that the commission approve a change to base interest rate alternative rates for the, uh, clean water S R, uh, waste water facility construction loan fund. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Holden to provide a little bit more in-depth summary and then we'll open it up, uh, or provide her, uh, and, uh, Ms. Cale, um, the construction program spirit. She asked for questions from the commission. Thank you.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, um, we are requesting a change to the project priority ranking system. As we mentioned earlier, the ranking system is the scoring system that the department uses to rank projects for placement on the priority list. Projects must be on the priority list before we can fund them pursuant to EPA requirements. We are requesting these changes for a couple of reasons. And I'll again reference the twenty fourteen, uh, Water Reform, uh, Resource and Development Act, order, um, which established more eligibility for the clean water program, uh, and also established the affordability criteria. Um, the affordability criteria we mentioned earlier, that allows us, um, uh, a place to evaluate applicant, um, from a financial perspective. Um, and like I said, is required, uh, now through order. The new priority ranking system will change several things. So let me just start with, uh, with how it will change. The old priority ranking system only allowed us to award points for either groundwater or for surface water, not for both. Our revised proposed system allows us to award points for both groundwater and surface water, uh, projects. The old priority ranking system included points for socioeconomic measure. Uh, we are required by EPA to evaluate based on affordability criteria. So we found ourselves, uh, awarding points in two different sections. It created redundancy and it, it, it weighted, uh, the priority ranking system with data that was not, um, pertinent to the project itself. Uh, the financial part of it is separate. And we want to look at, uh, the project and how it impacts water quality. Um, the old ranking system evaluated sustainability items for regionalization and utility management and some non-point source best management practices. The new priority system will evaluate, uh, through those items, but also through licensed certified operators and environmentally aware concepts such as water efficiency, energy efficiency, green infrastructure, environmental in- innovation, climate vulnerability assessments, and the ability to address climate change threats. So it really broadens, uh, the sustainability, uh, section of our point system. Um, the old system evaluated readiness to proceed and we will continue to do that. Uh, we award more pro- more points to projects, um, the closer they are to being ready, uh, to move forward with the project. Uh, it is important that we get those funds moving as soon as possible and a fair way to want to get that out there. So that is the priority ranking system changes that we are hoping to make. Uh, the second part of this is the change to interest rates, uh, with a focus being on the base interest rate, which will be set, uh, and then the, uh, the alternative interest rate and the condition will be what is in policy. And if you look at attachment one, page six, it does provide, um, a table that, uh, shows what the interest rates are that we are looking to put forth today and move forward with, um, as, as soon as possible so that we can, um, get these, these rates out there and apply them to, uh, real projects. Uh, we looked at rates, as we stated, uh, in the previous, uh, section, uh, by looking at what other clean water, uh, programs do in other states, by looking at the weighted average of all of those and all of those states and the national average, and also by looking at what NMFA does as a sister program here in the state of New Mexico. And, and that is really a summation of it. Judy, I don't know if you have anything that you would like to add. No, I'll just answer questions if any, if there's anything that needs to answer.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, anyone with questions for, uh, MED about this, uh, proposed new system? Okay, well, not to fill a void, but because I'm just a naturally curious person who almost always has questions, um, would you tell me, uh, Rhonda, the Water Resources Reform and Development Act, was that a federal act passed by Congress?
Yes, it was an amendment to the Clean Water Act.
Thank you. Um, and I, I will say one, a couple of things I really liked about this, um, system is I like the ability to give points for readiness to proceed. I know from, you know, signing all your loans and grants, that sometimes things get delayed because you're ready to give the money to a project, but they aren't ready to get started with the project. And so, uh, that can tie up money for a long time, but it doesn't actually get spent on the project. So I like the idea of taking that factor into consideration. And I also really like the bonus category points, the green project reserve and more points for sustainability and innovative, um, kinds of technologies. But my, my question was, uh, I wonder why you put those in the, in the bonus category? And, and it's only a potential twenty five out of, what is it, four hundred and fifty or something total? And I, you know, I, I also hope that we are seeing increasingly green projects that in, that increase sustainability, and I mean sustainability in the stop climate change, increase water quality, not sustainability in terms of can the community continue to pay the low?
Right. Uh, Madam, Madam Chair, woman next to chair. The, uh, the bonus points were actually in the old system. So, um, we do not have bonus points in the new system. So we have, so you're right, because it was only twenty five points for, for green or sustainable projects. And so we have moved all of those to a category where sustainability has a hundred points total. And we have included, uh, more ways and definitions and descriptors of what is sustainable in our new, in our new, um, system. So sustainability will have a total of a hundred points available and will include regionalization, uh, adequate rate structure to maintain facilities, uh, licensed certified operators, environmentally aware concepts, climate vulnerability, and, and the, uh, projects that adapt to climate change. Do you think we are seeing more recognition of those and more? Uh, well, I, I think it's, I think it's multiple things and Judy can probably speak to this on a technical level better, but I think, but I think the whole industry is kind of looking at ways to make things more sustainable, um, from various standpoints. Uh, and we have a couple of those projects in place right now. Um, Madam Chair, remember those questions. Um, let me apologize because I think the question that you just asked was in reference to a table that was attached to priority ranking system that says revise priority setting system with the G P R bonus point. It, is that what you're referring to? The, the priority rankings, the new priority ranking system is pages one through five, with page five having a total scoring of two hundred points for groundwater quality improvement, two hundred for surface water quality improvement, a hundred points for sustainability, a hundred points for readiness to proceed. There was a table after that that was actually part of the old system that shouldn't have been in there. And I think we messed up in our, in our attachments, um, which is probably where you're seeing that, that twenty five bonus points. That is not part of the new system. The new system is pages one through five on the June twenty twenty draft.
Does that have any points for green and sustainability projects?
Yes, um, Madam Chair, yes, it does. That's a hundred points for sustainability, um, that includes the, uh, vol- the climate vulnerability assessment, climate change threat, and then your water efficiency, energy efficiency, environmentally innovative, and green infrastructure.
Oh, good. So more points than before. I like that.
Thank you.
Um, I don't have any other questions. Do any other commissioners have any questions or does someone want to make a motion on this?
Um, Madam Chair, this is, uh, Commissioner Thompson. I'd like to talk about sustainability, have some questions. In my experience, many of the small communities have a real tough time, uh, budgeting funds for people are rehabilitation, repair, and replacement. And, and I see a little bit of that in the sustainability criterion. They're talking about fix it first, capital improvement plans and things like that. Um, if, you know, if, if I had my way, I would give that quite a bit more points. Uh, I'd like to see asset management. I'd like to see a documented track record of setting aside funds for replacement of failing infrastructure so that we're not just giving them a one-time grant or a low-interest loan, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, misstated that. But, uh, that we're, one of the conditions for these projects be that the community steps up to the plate and budgets for replacement as the, the, uh, infrastructure reaches its design line.
Madam Chair, this is David Snyder.
Yes.
I'd like to echo what Commissioner Thompson is referring to because if we're really concerned about greens, the greenest thing we can do, the best use of our money is when these people operate their plants efficiently and correctly. Uh, and included in any proper engineered set of plans, you have included all the technologies that are required in, in- and must give the highest quality environments. Or not, what I'm trying to say is we'll meet the environmental conditions, but where the failures are throughout my 30, 40 years of experience is that you don't, you don't get that unless you've got good operation. And that is far more important than any of the other bells and whistles that might be added to these projects. The meat and potatoes of this is making sure that we have good operation and funds to do so throughout the life of the plant, which is sometimes 30 to 50 years. I know your normal design life is probably going to be around 25 years, but you're talking about a long time investment. And so I just wanted to sustain what Bruce was talking about.
Madam ED, do you want to respond to that? Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Thompson and Cypher, couldn't agree more. I've been in this business, the engineering and wastewater business, for longer than I care to divulge. And you're absolutely 100% correct. There is, within the planning documents that are prepared by the community for this project and the preliminary engineering reports, there is, in the cost analysis, they include operation and maintenance and their evaluation of the most cost-effective, technically feasible project to address whatever the concern of the project is. In a perfect world, one that we wish we all lived in, these communities would be spending a lot more time thinking about operation and maintenance and putting aside the funds necessary. And sadly, not just in New Mexico, but nationally, it's a real shortfall because it just doesn't happen. And part of that is tied to the issue of that they don't charge adequate rates to their users to be able to fund everything that needs to be funded. And as I'm sure Commissioner Thompson knows, you know, the cost, the value of water and will include the value of wastewater in there is well beyond what we pay as rate payers to a system. And I can't, I can't fix that. And I would love to be able to fix that. And I would love people to pay more attention to it. If we add those kind of requirements onto this program, we're going to make even less money. And it's a huge issue. I just don't disagree with you on that. And when we, when we talk to our national partners at, you know, these big national meetings, every single state talks about this. And in New Mexico, of course, we're dealing with, you know, a lot of poor communities and we are dealing with people whose per capita income is well below national averages. And I don't have an answer for you sadly because if we add more permits onto this program, we won't make any loans. And we already subsidize, as I discussed earlier, through grants. You know, some of these projects we subsidize up to 90, 95%. And it's the only way a community is going to get away, is going to get their issues addressed. And if anybody has brilliant ideas on how to fix this, tell them. I'm all for it and great to listen.
Commissioner, please.
Ah, yes, Commissioner Cypher.
Yes, I, I don't claim to think that any of the things that we do are point system based on that we have power in the future to do a total fix. However, the discussion I was talking about was simply the point system. If I present an application to you that shows an understanding of where, how, and where I'm going to get funding for operating the system, and if I choose to do that, then I'm just saying that person ought to get more points. When we're considering all the reasons we're giving points, I'm just saying that would be a good one to do it on and to show that emphasis by so many.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Cypher, thank you. And I don't disagree with that either. Let me just let you all know that we have enough money to fund every single project that ever applies to us. And what stops projects from getting funded is their ability to take on debt. The point system is required by EPA and required by the statutes. However, it's almost superfluous because we have so much money. And so we rank the projects. We do start at the top with the funding offers, but we do have enough money to fund every single project. It's just that the ability to take on debt in so many communities just isn't there. So I don't disagree with you. And, you know, I think we're willing to talk about that. But in the end, it doesn't actually make a difference, sadly.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is Rhonda. And I guess I'd like to also just add to what Judy just said. First, I would like to read directly from the priority ranking, the proposed priority ranking system. Facilities should employ effective utility management practices to build and maintain technical, financial, and managerial capacity necessary to ensure the long-term sustainability of the wastewater infrastructure assets. The scoring criteria were developed to capture the merits of project planning methodologies that address best practices in utility management, development of sustainable communities, and protection of both point source and non-point source infrastructure investments. I would also like to address the fact that I think the conversation around this started with small communities. Small communities are indeed the ones that have problems setting money aside for repairs or seeing, maybe even seeing the virtue of it. So we have small communities that apply, but we also have large communities. We have Albert County Public Water Authority. We have, we have Portales. We have, we have some, up in the Northwest, there are a lot of San Juan and Farmington projects. And they're really good at this and some of them are really big projects. And they know, those larger, larger communities, they really know what they're doing with the asset management. So we want to be able to be flexible in how we apply these points with sustainability. And we may want to award a larger system points that look at different parts of sustainability, like some of the more environmental, green infrastructure, innovative buildings, where a small community can get the same points if they just have the adequate rate structure to take care of their assets the way they have them. We do, we and CPB do a lot of counseling with our small communities about, about rates and about planning and about how they need to look towards the future. The Drinking Water Bureau here in the department puts together a rate survey every year that has drinking water rates as well as wastewater rates. And we use that tool a lot to show communities where they rank among the states, I mean, among entities, so that they can see and they can justify to them constituents where their rates are. You know, there's sometimes where rates are so low that it is, it is mind-boggling that they have a lower rate. But sometimes their rates are up there and so it's just a matter of management and we just need to get through that. But we are very aware that they, that when we evaluate these projects, we are looking at all of those aspects. Not every project is going to, it's going to be on the green side. Some of it's going to be more about having the adequate licensed certified operators to maintain their systems. If they can't maintain their system through that, then the asset management plan doesn't do much good. And I think we've seen that now in COVID a couple of times as we've had a couple of communities that have had some issues with their plants because their operators were not able to get out to the system and maintain things and so it created more problems. So, you know, I think it's all a balancing act with this particular topic and one that we are acutely aware of. And, you know, it's absolutely right. If they manage things better, it's like maintenance in a car. If they maintain our cars, they'll last longer. And we know that and we talk to them about it. There are some communities out there that are able to do it and we respect that from them and will not try to place undue burden when they've got that under control. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from Commissioners?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Thompson again, if I may. And I certainly understand and fully appreciate the difficult circumstances that many of these communities are in. And I'm not asking that we make this a requirement per se because I do understand that in PER, Professional Engineering Report, whatever, preliminary engineering report, they're supposed to address some of those issues. But I just wonder if we specifically call it out in the sustainability criteria of these, of this rating system, if that might get a little more attention from some of these communities that are, that are sort of on the bubble, that might be able to pay a little bit more if the residents could afford a little bit more per month if they realized that this was one of the criteria that the Environment Department looked at. I guess I'm sort of echoing what Commissioner Cypher said, that perhaps don't change the system, but give more points to ability to sustain a, the infrastructure.
Madam Chair, Howard Hutchinson.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Madam Chair, I'm listening to Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Cypher's discussion here and some of the answers. I was just wondering from Commissioner Cypher, Commissioner Thompson, if they have a specific recommendation for altering the sustainability possible points or in the internal matrix, the points assigned. I am inclined to go along with what they are talking about here. And I think that creating a higher incentive for rates that secure a replacement fund is advisable. So I guess I'm asking Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Cypher if they are proposing to alter the sustainability possible point and the spread within that section.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Thompson, if I could respond. At a minimum, what I would like to see would be some recognition of asset management and ability to replace infrastructure as it reaches its design life. We wouldn't even have to change the points. I suspect if I was starting with a blank sheet of paper, you know, the total now is 475 fourths, which is sort of a somewhat arbitrary number. Maybe we could increase it to a nice round number like 500 and maybe distribute it so that there are some additional points given to those criteria or perhaps others that are important as well, not just the sustainability. But 500, 500 points is a nice round number.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Thompson, let me just go, let me just reiterate when I answered the Chairwoman's question. So the score, the points now are 600 points. If you can, if you can throw to page five of the priority ranking system with the June 2020 date. As I said, there was a table that was attached that was from the old system. So let me ask a question. So what I'm hearing and what I'm thinking is, under the sustainability section, we would, we would say points for sustainability will be awarded as follows, have the criteria we have there, and then we would add for entities that have an asset management plan in place, I'm trying to work on wording here, or project includes asset management planning? Or project, uh, I'm just trying to follow the way we have it worded. So we want to, we want to add some criteria. We want to add some consideration for asset management. And then also, you want to say asset management including a rate structure that addresses replacement costs? And let me just say, part of, part of what's required, EPA included a number of years ago that in order to, for clean water, clean water state revolving fund funding, that the community has to have a fiscal sustainability plan for their assets. And that, we, in New Mexico, we define a fiscal sustainability plan as an asset management plan. The state were allowed to define that as a risk. So we are requiring communities that get funding to have a fiscal sustainability plan for the assets that are constructed before the project's complete. We don't make them have it upfront, but we make them have it before we close out the project. So it's addressed on a, on a killing, but it's not addressing the point system. But I'm not, I'm not adverse to adding it.
And Judy, could you please explain the factor in that sustainability point list that you're talking about? There is, there are points in there. If the project entity has licensed certified operators and will continue to do so. Sounds to me like that, maybe you could speak about that as addressing Commissioner Cypher's concern about proper management of these systems to help them last longer.
Right, I mean, that's certainly a part of it, is having certified operators, the appropriate level of certified operator. But it doesn't address the whole thing because if you're talking about the financial side of that, meaning they have the money to set aside replacement costs for things that wear out like Thompson, that sort of thing. So, but that's, that's also things that are looked at in an asset management plan. So, um, there's a lot of ways to get at this. And I'm just, you know, so I'm wondering, do we add under sustainability, points for sustainability will be awarded if they already have an asset management plan and have rate, effect rates that take into account replacement costs? Does that get it? What's all we're thinking?
Sure, sure, Drew. This is David Cypher. Chair, through it.
Chair, Drew.
We lost her.
Okay, we lost her. But I would just say that I like that last suggestion. First of all, I want to reiterate, I love what you guys are doing here. This is wonderful. I just would like to see a little more weight on it, and I liked your very last idea. Thought that was great. If you had your ONM and your sinking funds, sustainability, that you'd get a little more points. I'm not talking about huge points. I think Bruce was talking about something like five percent, going from four seventy-five to five hundred. I was, I was thinking more like twenty percent, but hey, I'd take anything. I think it just takes us in the right direction. It's just, in my entire career, I just see it over and over again. If we can provide any sort of incentive that helps these folks prepare for the future, they're, they're the winners in the long run. Thank you.
Agreed. Uh, Council, am I allowed to change this on the fly?
Yeah, if there's some proposed language, we can certainly, it's up to the commission's discretion to approve the priority ranking system. So however that gets worked out, we don't have too many constraints here, and we can include the language as the commission feels is appropriate.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Thompson again. I'm looking at the little, some of the guy keeps looking out on me. I'm looking at the table which describes the points for sustainability, and there's, I think there might be one fairly simple phrase that would address some of my concerns. It says promoting sustainable utilities and/or communities through, and five points each. And the first one says the six at first, and I'm not sure what that is. That might be, maybe we, that might be where we could put asset management in. The second part is community improvement plan, and the third one is the one that I think we'll reach, we might be able to do it real quickly or easily, and that says full cost pricing structure that budgets for infrastructure repair and replacement costs. I wonder if we could change that, the full cost pricing and rate structure that budgets for infrastructure repair and replacement costs. So we've got pricing and the rate structure. That explicitly calls to attention the community's willingness to pay for that infrastructure. So one possibility might be to change six at first. Again, I'm not familiar with that term. The second, and the real easy one, would be to just change the full cost pricing structure to also be a pricing and rate structure. I'll back off.
Okay, so I have a rate structure in place that includes replacement costs?
Before we get too into the detailed specifics of the language, could I ask NMEB to please address how many and whether they think communities would be unable to carry these loans if those additional costs are added in for them? And then I'll go to, I think Commissioner Dominguez had a comment as well. Do you want to add your comment to mine or wait for the answer first, Commissioner Dominguez?
Actually, your, your question was kind of in line with what mine was, was along the same lines. If, if that additional language is placed in there, would we have communities that might, I don't want to say be penalized, but they're, they might not reach that ranking, which, and I'm back to the, one of the original points in Vermont that made was, there's plenty of money to go around, and so the, the ranking is, I don't want to say a moot point, but I understand what Commissioner Thompson and Cypress are getting at, of having something work long-term. But by modifying this ranking is, are we really going to accomplish that? Or is it going to make some of the communities not have the ability to repay that?
So I guess I'll go two directions. Madam Chair, so what we're talking about is adding this into the priority list to get some additional points, but it's not going to be a requirement of the funding. The, the real requirement of the funding is that they be able to repay the loan. That's kind of the bottom line. And so this is to give them additional points under the sustainability category, but it doesn't, it's not going to require them to do something additional that they aren't already required to do, i.e. the fiscal sustainability plan, site asset management plan. And I think for Commissioner Dominguez's question or comment, again, when we, when we evaluate a community's ability to repay a loan, we're looking at three years' worth of audit with their current financial situation, average expenses, average income, and when we look at seventy-five percent of that and say that's, that's what they have available to repay debt, and that's, of course, subtracting out any current debt that they have. So it's not, what we're talking about now isn't going to change any of that. So this is, this is just talking about our ability to award additional points in the sustainability category, to acknowledge people, or acknowledge borrowers who have taken a couple of extra steps to make sure they have a rate structure in place that includes replacement costs and/or an asset management plan. And we already have the licensed and certified operators part of it in there. So, and, and I'm thinking if we, if we up the sustainability points to a hundred and fifty, then it, then it carries a little more weight. We really have to focus, the most points we believe should be focused on the water quality impact of the project, because that is the directive of the Clean Water Act, is that these funds are for, you know, intended to be used to protect and clean up water quality issues. So that, I believe, needs to be the main focus. But if we, if we move sustainability up to a hundred and fifty points and add in the additional language about the rate structure, I think that will give a little more focus on that, if that's agreeable to focus.
And this is Rhonda, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I would also like to say that this section helps us address non-traditional projects, projects that are not wastewater systems, that do not have rates, that are focused on non-point source projects, that our funding can, can address. We can address things like forest filming and soil and water conservation district projects and things like that, that there are no rates. And so we do want to have some of those other sustainability issues in there for us to work points for as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cypress.
Just one point towards Ms. Kells' thoughts. I thought that she did a great job bringing that together. I would also encourage everyone to understand that after a few years of the plant operating, if it doesn't have adequate funding, it will affect the water quality. Does that make sense? So when we place this sustainability issue upfront, you're really talking about water quality, so you're, you're doing both. So I think we're accomplishing both of the main goals that you're referring to.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Cypress, that's an excellent point. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Howard here.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Madam Chair, I, I just have a question on the sustainability chart. When it refers to the capital improvement plan, is, is that making reference to the infrastructure capital improvement plan that, that entities are required to produce?
Rhonda or Judy, are you going to address that?
Madam Chair, yes. That, that chart is actually part of the old chart, part of the old ranking system, what Commissioner Hutchinson is referring to. So if you look at the proposed priority ranking system that in the top right corner says June 2020 draft, it is the page, page six, I believe, document, page five, rather, page five, which has the total scoring for, for the whole, the whole thing. We took out the scoring, that itemized it for specific items, and we left it more broad so that we could apply points, so that we could evaluate on a broader scale and award points that way. And then the groundwater scoring and the surface water scoring are associated by the groundwater bureau and the surface water quality bureau.
Commissioner, any further questions, or do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Thompson. I, I have to, I can't find the table that you're referring to on page five. I have one, two, three, four, five, six item, eight item. I see the old revised priority table. I'm not seeing a new one. Is that what we're voting on?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Please.
This is Commissioner Thompson. I believe what the Bureau is referring to is should be labeled NMEB attachment one, priority system update draft 2020.06.24 final, which would be five-page PEA, should be labeled NMEB attachment one, and page five is that attachment.
Commissioner.
So what we're talking about is changing sustainability to a hundred and fifty points. And then on the previous page, under sustainability, we will include a bullet that says rate structure in place that includes replacement costs.
Madam Chair, everyone, thank you for pushing me up there. Weeding through the documents. I appreciate it.
It's a lot, it's a lot of stuff.
That could set us up for a nice, clear motion.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Thompson. I knew that we approved the, the priority ranking system as modified, where sustainability would be a hundred and fifty points.
I did this, Commissioner Cypress, after that motion.
Madam Chair.
Uh, hold on just a second. So only make the change to the points, not add the phrase on the page before about the, let me give you a chance to clarify your motion, Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. I would like to clarify. To include both the points and the discussion, the criteria that a rate structure be established to allow for replacement of costs, replacement costs as, as the project reaches its design life, or something like that. I'll accept that the language that was called, provided.
All right. So that's the motion. Who is the second?
I second the motion. I second the amendment as well.
I'm sorry. So Commissioner Cypress is seconding the motion as clarified by Commissioner Thompson, correct?
That is correct. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion, Commissioners? We have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Who is this?
This is Council Sanchez. The motion was captured in terms of including the updated system, both seventy-four, six, A, seven, B, and the corresponding regulation, twenty point seven, point five, twelve, speaks in terms of the commission adopting. So I would, I would suggest to the movement that rather than use the language approved, the word approved, that it be adopted.
This is Commissioner Thompson. I'd be, I would accept that suggestion. Thank you.
I accept the change to the second as well.
All right. Any discussion? I'm sorry, Nancy, uh?
Sorry, General, I have a quick clarifying question for you, if it's appropriate to ask right now.
Sure.
The Bureau's request was for, as Commissioner Sanchez pointed out, adoption of the priority ranking system, but also for approval of interest rates. Would you be considering that as a separate item, or would that be wrapped into this motion?
Are the interest rates not wrapped into item number nine on the agenda?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, they are included as the agenda item. However, the wording of the motion was for adoption of the proposed priority ranking system that cannot address the interest rates.
All right. So Commissioner Thompson, would you like to expand your motion even farther to tack on the addition of approval of the proposed interest rates?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Sanchez, I mean, Council Sanchez.
Just to clarify what Council said, the request for approval has two parts. The first part's already been addressed. The second part that he spoke to is this language. Additionally, pursuant to twenty point seven, point five, fourteen, G, the Department requests the commission to approve the change to the base interest rate and alter the interest rate for the wastewater facility construction loan fund. I think that the clarification was seeking.
Yes, that's why we said approve the interest rate and adopt the priority ranking system, correct?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Thompson. I would accept Council's suggestion that the motion approve the interest rates and adopt the priority ranking system as modified by most candidates.
Madam Chair, do you need a revised second as well? So moved.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, commissioners? All right, uh, not hearing any. Ms. Jones, would you please call the roll for a vote on this, please?
Yes, ma'am. Beginning with Commissioner Candalaria.
Yes.
Commissioner Sancho.
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Musserafi.
Yes.
Commissioner Patton.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader. Commissioner Rader. Thank you. Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tinan.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Madam Chair, through it.
Yes.
And your vote is unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sanchez, can I, do we need an order on that? I don't think one was submitted. I think we need some document to memorialize the commission's action today. Would that be correct?
That would be correct, and I'm not aware that the department submitted a proposed order. If they would do that, we'd maybe appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Tensio, could you please get on? Why don't you send your order directly to Mr. Sanchez? And then when you two have worked out an order for me to sign, please, Mr. Sanchez, you can go ahead and send that to me.
Okay.
And I will just tell you all, I plan to be on vacation next week. Finally. So if it doesn't happen this week, you have all of next week, and everybody has plenty of time. Thank you, everyone, for getting us through agenda items seven and eight. Carry on with giving out money, construction programs bureau. Thank you. Thank you all very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So now let us move on to agenda item number nine, request for approval of revised E M P C P P W Q C C number twenty thirty-four. The first thing I need to say is that we received a PowerPoint from the department very late on Friday, was not sent to commissioners, till almost one thirty on Friday afternoon on a long holiday weekend. I do not believe it was posted on the website until even later after that. And I would really like people to remember that those kinds of actions put a lot of strain on the staff in our office of public facilitation when they get things at the last minute, and really impede our ability to make everything transparent and available to the public. And everything in the import and the pattern of the Water Quality Control Commission rules is to require notices of intent, filing of documents well ahead of commission meetings. The draft agenda goes out ten days before. I realize there is no rule that says when you can submit an explanatory PowerPoint. But I would just say that in the interest of variability to the public and notice to as many people as possible, I'm just not inclined to allow this PowerPoint to be shown. I just think that's fair to O P F staff or to the public. I will give Ms. Weatherly the chance to comment on that, and I will give Councilor Sanchez an opportunity to comment on that. So let's do that first, Ms. Weatherly.
Can you hear me okay? Am I muted? Okay. Um, I am not sure what to say to that, Madam Chair, except that the PowerPoint was, is a short PowerPoint created to help the Bureau with their presentation, and it was available at the end of, during last week. It came to you on Friday, a little later than when the Bureau had sent it to me, and I take responsibility for that. Um, I understand there isn't a rule for the amount of time that these presentations become to the commission. However, I know that in the past, the commission has asked for a longer period of time for them to be submitted, so I would leave that up to your discretion.
Thank you. Councilor Sanchez, do you have anything you want to add or comment on?
No, I agree that it was untimely. I think the commission had a whole slew of documents to review, and this made it additionally more difficult. I don't think the department is submitting this as an exhibit, and if it helps the commission better understand what is being proposed to them, I would suggest that it be allowed.
Commissioner Sancho.
Commissioner Hutchinson, do you have something to add to this discussion? No, I guess not. Well, I guess my point is, we have a lot of items on the agenda here. My review of that PowerPoint is that it generally addressed the commission's authority and for the contents of the water quality management plan in general. I was hoping to limit today's discussion only to the five items, sorry, four items, that the commission asked the Bureau to address in revisions in the introduction. But if you all want to show it and extend today's meeting, I will not stand in your way.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you'll find that the presentation is short and won't take too much more time. Um, may I proceed?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to introduce myself to everyone again. My name is Crystal Weatherly. I'm Assistant General Counsel at N E D and counsel for the Surface Water Quality Bureau on the update to the State Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process. With me today is Jennifer Fulham, who you may remember is the Team Leader for Water Quality Standards, Planning and Reporting, and Shelley Lemon, the Bureau Chief for the Surface Water Quality Bureau. Today, in accordance with the Clean Water Act and the New Mexico Water Quality Act, the Bureau is seeking the commission's approval of the updated Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process. The Bureau presented the update to the commission at the June ninth meeting. During that meeting, the comments were received by the public and the commission, and after consideration of the proposed update and comments, the commission remanded the plan and C P P back to the Bureau for additional changes. And Miss Fulham is willing to discuss that. In preparation for this, the following documents were filed with the commission in advance on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, and those included the draft Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process, Appendix A, Anti-Degradation Policy Implementation Procedure for Regulated Activities, Appendix C, Hydrology Protocol, Appendix C, Hydrology Protocol Field Sheet, and the Craft Block, summarizing the revisions that were requested by the commission at the June ninth meeting. Miss Fulham will be giving a short presentation summarizing the updated plan and process, and also summarizing the changes made, the statements the commission made, and subsequent order following the June ninth meeting. And following the presentation, Miss Fulham and Miss Lemon will be available to answer questions as a panel. And with that, I am going to hand it over to Miss Fulham.
Thank you, Crystal.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, commissioners, that's the end of the flip. Thank you for your time today. As Crystal introduced, I am Jennifer Fulham, and I'm the Team Leader for the Standards, Planning and Reporting Team for the New Mexico Environment Department's Surface Water Quality Project. I'm here to present the department's proposed updates for the State Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process, also referred to as the W Q M P C P P. And Alan, I think you will be forwarding the question.
Thank you. So for the sake of the commission's time today, I'm only going to address the commission briefly on early left shot in regards to the updates to the W Q M P C P P. So in our presentation to the commission, in our presentation to the commission presented on June ninth, twenty twenty, the purpose and function of the W Q M P documents are combined to serve as a mechanism to describe the purpose and entities responsible for processes that are being implemented by the Department of Public Safety or the Districts of the Clean Water Act, and how this provides a transparent and consistent approach for protecting and improving water quality throughout the state. They also provided the history of the W Q M P dating back to nineteen seventy-six and nineteen seventy-eight, when the C P P was initially adopted effectively. As you might recall, the last revision to the W Q M P C P P was in two thousand and eleven, when the documents were consolidated into one comprehensive document. So following the background of the W Q M P, we proceeded to delve into the goals of the current update, and those goals included determining the functionality. And we did this through surveying a broad range of individuals representing many organizations and disciplines. We ensure the W Q M P C P P is meeting the elements required by both forty CFR one thirty point five and one thirty point six. And finally, we sought to update the processes and procedures to accurately reflect the mechanisms used by the state to ensure we're upholding the goals of the Clean Water Act. So then we went through the process undertaken to provide tribes, stakeholders, and the public with adequate opportunity to engage. And this included a seventy-five day public comment period to which the department raised the one hundred and ninety-five comments. We summarized those comments into a concise response to comment document, and that was provided to both the commenters and to the commission back in June. So Alan, if you could move the slides. Thank you. Following the department's presentation and discussion with the commission during the June ninth, twenty twenty, commission meeting, the commission concluded to remand the W Q M P back to the department with directions to incorporate several additional elements. So here on slide three, there's four elements that were discussed back in June. Commissioner Hutchinson's comments and requests for language in the W Q M P C P P to address challenges posed by water quality management in the Southwest. Commissioner Rader's comments regarding acknowledgement of the governor's executive order on climate change and language it provides for evaluation and planning. Commissioner Thompson's comments requesting attention and language pertaining to MS four, stormwater permitting processes. With such respect to those along the middle Rio Grande, as presented by the public and supported by the commission, language it recognizes the challenges for planning and analysis of impacts to water quality management in New Mexico as it pertains to the federal definition for waters of the United States, and we refer to this as waters. So following a closer evaluation of the commission's comments, found that each of these elements all had a similar theme in the respect that they all represent unique challenges New Mexico faces with implementing water quality management. So with that element in mind, the department proceeded with amending the W Q M P C P P to request these elements. In order to capture these specific comments and to provide a bookmark for future challenges that New Mexico will face, a new section to the W Q M P C P P was created under the introduction. This new section's intent is really to address the comments and directives from the commission, which captures the significant challenges to water quality management in New Mexico. Alan? Could you? Yeah. So as we see here on slide, oh, actually, go back to slide four. Um, so here on slide four, following the June ninth commission meeting, N E D has now drafted an order to amend, as requested by the commission, with amended the W Q M P to include the creation of that new section to the introduction. We created a summary of changes that resulted from the June ninth meeting, and we drafted a request for approval. So these documents were filed with the Office of Public Facilitation on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, and they should be part of the supporting documentation for this agenda item. So the department believes the three goals that were initially implemented have been achieved, and with the incorporation of an additional element highlighting the challenges to water quality management in New Mexico, the W Q M P serves... I'm so... I apologize tremendously for that. The W Q M P serves as a functional document for the implementation of water quality management within the state of New Mexico as it pertains to requirements under the federal Clean Water Act. So on slide five, and as we discussed back in June, there are some final steps for updating the W Q M P C P P. If approved by the commission, the Bureau will post the approved W Q M P to the Bureau's website and proceed with obtaining the required approvals from EPA as required in accordance with forty CFR one thirty point five and one thirty point six. Once EPA provides approval, the W Q M P will become effective for implementation as it pertains to purposes of the Clean Water Act, and notification of that approval by EPA will be made publicly and publicly available on the Bureau's website. And so, next slide. So as we conclude, I just want to express our appreciation for the commission's time today. I know you have an extensive agenda, and unless our counsel has anything further to add, I'd just like to bring the Bureau Chief for the Surface Water Quality Bureau, Shelley Lemon, in as part of the panel to assist with answering any questions that you may have. Thank you. Counselor?
I don't have anything to add, except that at this time, I would like to have things of A through E admitted into the record if possible.
So they're admitted. Alan, would you please stop sharing the screen and let me see the practice? They're admitted. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments on the Water Quality Management Plan?
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, Commissioner Hutchinson.
I would like to commend the efforts to capture my concerns, and I think that language in the introductions really addresses what I was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Rader. I want to echo Commissioner Hutchinson's remarks. I also found the section on climate change to be very thorough, and I think it really will help especially to explain to the public what we're trying to anticipate in terms of climate change impacts to New Mexico over the coming decades. I think there's still a lot of work to be done in terms of understanding fully as a state what adaptation measures need to be made, and I'm just very appreciative that the Bureau is able to so well capture the implications. the Bureau is able to so well capture the implications of groundwater quality, the city's water quality.
Thank you, Commissioner Rader.
And Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Thompson, and I too would like to express my appreciation to the staff. They did a nice job. They captured my intent and my comments very well and succinctly, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Anyone else, or do you have a motion?
I need the unmute button. This is Commissioner Kimmons. I would move to approve. I don't have the agenda in front of me to have the whole statement, so can I just move to approve it?
Yeah, to water quality management plan, continuing planning process, number WQCC plain dash 34. Thank you.
Commissioner Hutchinson, second.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion or conversation about this?
Madam Chair?
Yes, who's speaking?
This is Council Sanchez. There's a little peculiarity and difference, if you will, between the pertinent federal regulation and the state statute. 74-6, 74 dash 6, that's 4B, speaks in terms of the Commission adopting the comprehensive WQNT and developing the CPT. The corresponding federal regulation, 40 CFR 136A, speaks in terms, defines WQNTs as certified and approved updates. So I would ask the Commission, the movement, to consider casting his motion in terms of both adopting and approving the update to the Water Quality Management Plan, the CPT.
Commissioner Kimmons, would you like to try that?
I would be happy to approve and adopt the Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process, WQCC 20 dash 34.
I defer on the second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Jones, would you give us a roll call for our vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Surtman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Musseraki?
Yes.
Commissioner Tatten?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifer?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, your vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Surface Water Quality Bureau. You have your plan all set now, and we will move on to number 10 on our agenda. I think this is going to be a short item, so I would like to proceed with this before we take another break, since we've only been going about an hour and a half. I would then just get through this one pretty quickly. This is the Environment Department's request to schedule approval of the Rio Grande Total Maximum Daily Load, WQCC 20 dash 53. John Verheul for ENMD. Mr. Verheul, would you like to proceed?
I would. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, good afternoon, members of the public and members of the Commission. My name is John Verheul. I'm an attorney with the New Mexico Environment Department, Office of General Counsel. With me on the line today are Rachel Jankowicz and Heidi Henderson from the Department's Surface Water Quality Bureau. And I note that this item is on the agenda as a request to schedule approval of the Rio Grande Total Maximum Daily Load. So, Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind, we've prepared for any eventuality, but we're prepared to present the content of the actual document, but what is the Commission's expectation of what will be happening today?
Well, our expectation, as you're asking us to schedule our discussion and approval of the TMDL, and our agenda item said request to schedule that, I am not going to bump it ahead, the discussion of the merits of that, without the public having had very clear and direct notice that we would be doing that today. So my expectation is that we will be scheduling this, and as I believe we suggested several times to you, because we have such a packed agenda today, and currently very little scheduled on our October agenda for that meeting, but I, my expectation is we will be scheduling this today for you all to present to us at our October meeting.
Understood. Thank you. I appreciate that. So I'll just give you a little bit of background on what it is that we're going to be asking for to be scheduled at the October meeting. Total maximal daily loads are required by Section 303D of the Clean Water Act. The state law does not speak to these documents, although they are incorporated into the Water Quality Management Plan, which you just voted to approve and adopt. However, the Commission is, and I quote the State Water Pollution Control Agency for this state, for all purposes of the Federal Water Pollution Control Act, otherwise known as the Clean Water Act. And I'm quoting from the Water Quality Act itself, the State Water Quality Act. And so, before a total maximum, maximum daily load document is adopted and approved from the perspective of EPA, it must be approved and adopted by this Commission. And that is what we are requesting that you schedule for the October meeting. And at that point, we will have provided you with the 81-page total maximum daily load document itself, as well as a proposed order of approval and a PowerPoint presentation, which members of the Surface Water Quality Bureau can go through and formally present it to the Commission for your approval and adoption.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, one question that I have about this, because this is not, it's not an adjudicatory or making it matter. It is... Somebody is not... It is making me echo back. Sorry. But you are nonetheless asking the Commission for action. My question for you, and for Council Sanchez, if he might want to weigh in on this, is would this be a matter on which members of the public would be allowed to make comments or participate in our review of that TMDL? Mr. Verheul may have, be having some bandwidth chat...
I apologize, I was muted.
Okay.
Madam Chair, thank you. And I'll let Council Sanchez weigh in afterward if he sees fit. You are correct that there are no procedural rules for this type of approval, given that it is neither an adjudicatory matter nor a rulemaking. In the past, for what it's worth, the Commission has always allowed members of the public and/or interested parties or stakeholders to comment upon approvals of these total maximum daily load documents. In addition, with this particular document, the Surface Water Quality Bureau, as they always do, have solicited comments from members of the public, and that is in fact included in the document itself, where they talk about the public participation.
Thank you. That's very helpful in terms of planning how long we might need on the agenda, you know, for this. Mr. Sanchez, is there anything you want to add on this?
No, I would just agree that past practice has been to allow public comment, and that includes the TMDL that went up to a committee of the Supreme Court. I would certainly invite the counsel of Commissioner Dominguez, who has been sitting on the Commission while this, this TMDL comes forward to the Commission.
Okay, and as I crawl up out from under the bus there, I think as John Verheul has said, for what it's worth, historically, TMDL approvals have included the public's ability to provide public comment, both during the drafting stage, which is written comments and verbal comments at a commission meeting. With that said, for your planning purposes on allowing or allotting time for an agenda item, I would suggest that if... If the public has submitted written comments prior to the Commission meeting, and the Commission has access to that, that the public, not in their verbal comments, just reread the written comments that the Commission has already had before them, I think it's the best use, Commission and the parties involved, that we expedite that, if members of the public want to summarize the written comments, that's one thing, but rereading them into the record, particularly if they're lengthy, is, I don't know, that's the best use of everybody's time, but as our capsule has indicated, historically, that has been allowed for public participation. But there's nothing in that or that addresses that.
Okay, thank you for that historical perspective, Commissioner Dominguez. And I just want to make sure, I'll work with ENMD Office of Public Facilitation staff to make sure that any written comments are posted on the website, so Commissioners and members of the public have access to see those. And I will very strongly encourage Council Verheul to ensure that that PowerPoint gets to us well ahead, maybe even 10 days ahead of the next Commission meeting, because I will point out again that Monday, October 12th, is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Others call it Columbus Day. That is a state and national holiday, and I do not want either Commission members or OPF staff to be burdened with lots of last-minute submissions on a Friday before. It is the beauty of having Tuesday meetings. We seem to have certain times in the year where we just follow immediately on holidays. So, Commissioners, any discussion, motion regarding this matter of scheduling our adoption and approval of the TMDL for the Rio Grande?
Madam Chair, this is...
Yes, Commissioner Hutchinson.
I would move that we schedule adoption and approval of the total maximum daily load for the Grande River Robeset for our October...
Madam Chair, Ms. Dominguez, second.
Any further discussion on this matter, Commissioners? All right, Ms. Jones, would you call the roll, please, for our vote on this matter?
Yes, I will. Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Surtman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Musseraki?
Yes.
Commissioner Tatten?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader? Commissioner Rader?
Commissioner Rader texted me that she briefly lost power at her house and was going to be signing back in shortly, so let's continue down the roll and come back to her at the end, just to see if she's able to get back in.
Okay. Commissioner Seifer?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Madam Chair, please?
Yes.
And has Commissioner Rader rejoined us? Okay.
We will have to show her as not participating in the vote. We still have a quorum to continue, but your TMDL has been scheduled, Mr. Verheul. Thank you for your presentation today. Any other follow-up on that needed?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just to add that the written comments that were submitted are actually an appendix D of the TMDL document that I think is on the WTCC website right now, but we will certainly work with that office to ensure that it's up there. And one further question, should we anticipate this two-step process for TMDL approvals going forward?
Yes.
Okay.
And what I was referring to was if some public comments come in to OPF, once this goes on our agenda, there might be somebody who wants to submit something. I'm not asking that the comments are received to be put up in duplicate. I'm just, I just want to make sure that if anything additional comes in, because people see it on the WQCC agenda, that everyone has access to see those.
Understood. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you all. I think everybody probably needs a break from staring at their screens. I have about 2:55, why don't we take about a 15-minute break until 3:10, and everybody can mute themselves, walk around a little bit, and I'll see you all in about 15 minutes when we go on to item number 11 on the agenda. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Rader. I've been able to rejoin the meeting.
Glad you could get back on, Kelsey. We just voted on the scheduling, the TMDL for our October meeting, and now we're taking about a 15-minute break.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry to miss the last vote.
I don't think you can control the power, so...
Unfortunately, not yet.
See you in about 15 minutes. See you in about 15 minutes. With a quorum of
Madam Chair Pruitt? This is Howard.
Yes, Commissioner Hutchinson.
I just have a question, uh, tomorrow morning, I have a doctor's appointment that's supposed to start at 8:20. I was wondering is, would this be the phone number I would call in on my phone to participate in the morning? Is it the number that was posted?
Commissioner Hutchinson, there is a separate, uh, invite and meeting for tomorrow's, uh, sorry, a separate phone number and meeting invitation for tomorrow's, um, meeting of the commission, but I do not believe that we are going to need to be meeting tomorrow. Uh, so let's go ahead and, and address this, uh, next item on our agenda. We have all the parties for this. Uh, before I speak too much about it, let, let me, uh, just see if Ms. Jones will call the roll so we can see how many commissioners are here.
Yes, I will. Okay, starting with Commissioner Candelaria. And Commissioner Sturton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Here.
Commissioner McWilliams?
I'm here.
Okay. Commissioner Musherafi? Okay, we'll come back. Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Siper?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Timmons?
Here.
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Madam Chair Pruitt?
I'm here.
And we have, has Commissioner Musherafi joined us? Has Commissioner Rader joined us? Madam Chair, everyone's present with the exception of Commissioner Musherafi and Commissioner Rader.
All right, well, we do still have a quorum and I would like to see, um, my understa- the next matter on our agenda was a public hearing on WTCC 20-53. Yeah, that, my cheater, uh, annotated agenda doesn't have this one. Agenda item number 11, public hearing on WTCC 20-16 of, uh, NMEB versus Matador Production Company in San Mateo Midstream. Um, we were going to start this public hearing after conclusion, uh, of the regular WTCC meeting, but, uh, I have received information from the parties that they have reached a settlement in principle. We have, uh, the parties and their attorneys, um, online here. We have the hearing officer that was appointed in this matter, Mr. Virtue. Hello, Mr. Virtue, we're gonna see if he's taking work away from you in the last minute. Uh, and, um, let me just also report that I had a text from Commissioner Rader that she is on the line and hearing everything that we say, but for whatever reason she disputed and she is not, we have not been able to hear her. So, um, the party sent me an order to continue the hearing, but it came, um, right at the end of lunch today. I assert that we do no permission to review that. So, um, I guess I would, uh, ask the party's attorneys to, and, and the hearing officer, if he would like to say something, uh, of where we are and what they recommend, what they are asking for us to do, and I will give our counsel an opportunity to weigh in on this. So, um, NMEB, I believe, uh, is, I think it's Mr. Knight, uh, if you'd like to, uh, start, and then we'll have Mr. Rankin, uh, respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, my name is Andrew Knight. I'm a counsel for New Mexico Environment Department. And with me today are Shelly Lemon and Sarah Holcomb from our Surface Water Quality Bureau. And I am pleased to announce that we have reached a settlement in this matter. Uh, we have finalized the settlement agreement and the agreement has been signed by Matador and is in the process of being signed by NMEB. So consequently, there will be no need for a hearing on this matter. Uh, we are happy to, um, discuss or present the terms of the settlement and talk about the settlement in, in detail, uh, to the extent the commission would like. Uh, however, understanding that, uh, the commission has not, not had a chance to see the settlement documents, uh, we would ask that, um, the commission set a time to, um, to receive a presentation of, of the settlement after having time to review the documents and then, uh, hold a vote on approval of the settlement. And, uh, let, Mr. Rankin can, uh, follow up if he would like to, uh, add to what I've said.
Madam Chair, uh, Hearing Officer Virtue, thank you very much for, for entertaining our, um, science and stuff from the New Mexico State full day. Uh, with me, uh, virtually in the offices of Dallas, uh, are Matthew Hereford, President of Matador Production Company and of San Mateo Midstream LLC. Also, Matthew Spicer, uh, Chief Operating Officer of Operations, uh, for San Mateo and Senior Director President and General Manager of San Mate- uh, San Mateo Midstream. Also, Brian Willie, Co-Chief Operating Officer, uh, for San Mateo and Co-General Counsel for Matador, and also Senior Attorney, uh, in Office Counsel, Christopher Markley, are also all in attendance virtually from the offices of Dallas. Uh, Adam Rankin here, that's appearing on behalf of the respondents, uh, with the awful heart. We appreciate again the time. Um, as, uh, Mr. Knight conveyed, we have reached a agreement which we are, uh, we think is in the best interest of the river and we would, um, understand that, uh, you have not had time at all through this, so we would be willing to give you a brief overview, uh, overview today and we will present in more detail at a later time, um, and address any questions the commission may have, uh, at a time that's convenient for the commission. However, if you know, uh, that there was a, uh, time scheduled for tomorrow, so if at all possible, we would request the commission to entertain our settlement tomorrow. We understand that, um, the, the commission may, may want more time to review, uh, the, uh, settlement and then the proposed terms.
Um, can I ask a couple of questions and, and, uh, I, our counsel may have some questions as well. Is there anything in the settlement that is time-sensitive that would, are, you know, that would, would deadlines be delayed if it was waited until the October meeting? Uh, and are there any notice requirements for the commission, um, reviewing and approving a settlement that would argue for postponing the commission review and approval of this till the October meeting? I will tell you that a couple of commissioners had emailed me about time conflict tomorrow and finding, uh, we certainly have the time scheduled and set aside and we could find a time where we could have a quorum of commissioners that I'm a little bit concerned about if the document is not signed yet uh, by the Environment Department about the timing of getting a signed document to all the commissioners and, um, making it available to the public. Um, as we just went through this morning, although it is not, um, I don't believe there's a time or a piece in the commission meeting for participation of the public in the commission's review and approval of this settlement. I would like to hear from all the attorneys, certainly from Mr. Virtue as the hearing officer, any of you, uh, party's attorneys, hearing officer, commission counsel, have any advice for us or any, uh, information on the notice requirements for this?
Madam Chair, this is Andrew Knight, and I will say that I am- Madam Chair, this is Andrew Knight, and I will say that I am not aware of any notice requirements for the, uh, commission approval of a settlement in an adjudicatory matter such as this.
Uh, Madam Chair, Adam Rankin here, um, just in response to your question about timing issues as well, um, the, the way the settlement agreement is structured is that some aspects of the, uh, performance uh, that are contemplated would commence, uh, upon execution, um, which would, uh, essentially require at this time response to start outlaying, uh, costs or, you know, spending money, uh, in furtherance of the, the settlement agreement. So, uh, our, um, you know, in light of that, if it's not possible, we, we would prefer, of course, um, review and approval, um, sooner than later, uh, so that, uh, San Mateo and Matador are, are, have the confidence that they've got the approval of the commission, um, before they start spending a lot of money in response to that, in furtherance of the settlement agreement. But other than that, um, there are no other, uh, timelines or restrictions or limits that would, um, that would be implicated, uh, other than just the commencement of the steps to, you know, to, to, to comply with the settlement agreement, which involves spending the money.
Mr. Virtue or Mr. Sanchez, either of you have anything you want to add? Uh, I think you're muted, Mr. Virtue.
Excuse me, can you hear me now? Can you hear? Okay. I, 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 I do not believe there's any specific notice requirement for a settlement agreement other than those that are required under your open meetings resolution. You've already noticed this for hearing, uh, for tomorrow. Um, I believe you could go ahead and hear the settlement and approve it tomorrow based upon the prior no- notice having been given of the meeting. Um, so that would be an option if the commission is comfortable, uh, reviewing the document or approving it on, uh, rather short notice. Um, the other option, it seems to me, would be to schedule it at the next commission hearing and properly notice that meeting and this agen- and the agenda item related to it and hear it at that time. So I believe this is a matter that's appropriate for the commission to decide in terms of what it feels comfortable with in terms of proceeding to consider the settlement agreement at this time.
Mr. Sanchez, is there anything you want to add? Uh, perhaps Mr. Sanchez has not made it back from lunch. I don't seem to have any emails. Well, commissioners, uh, questions, suggestions, requests?
Um, Madam Chair, I guess it is more, uh, the, um, a comment regarding the procedural. Currently, our, what we have is an agenda item here, we have got the hearing.
Um, Commissioner Dominguez, I'm having a little trouble hearing you. I, I, would everybody please try to mute who is not speaking? I think that's going to help the cause here. Please, please start again, Commissioner Dominguez.
Okay. That sounds a little bit better on my end. Um, my, my comments or questions is more along a procedural line. And that is that currently on the commission's agenda is notice for a public hearing. And although this settlement is in affiliation with the public hea- or the parties involved in the public hearing, we do not have an agenda item for approval of a settlement agreement. Um, my concern would be that if we proceeded with regaining a settlement agreement in our hurry and taking action on that, that some member of the public is, could potentially raise a flag under Open Meetings Act that we didn't have that as an agenda item. And that would be a concern there that then we would have to redo things. As, as much as I would like to keep moving stuff down the road and get things done, I would raise the concern that, uh, the potential violation of Open Meetings Act because we do not have enough item for approval of a settlement agreement. So that was more, uh, comments slash thoughts slash questions. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes, is this, uh, Council Sanchez?
Yes, I'm not sure what happened. I was disconnected. I, I agree entirely with, uh, Commissioner Dominguez. The matter was noticed on the draft agenda for a public hearing. Uh, the approval of settlement under twenty dash, twenty point one point three, one twenty-two B one is a completely different matter, uh, section F of the Open Meetings Act, that ten six fifteen dash one says that meeting notice shall include agenda containing a list of specific items or business to be discussed or transacted at the meeting. That isn't the case here. It would be incorrect, I think, for the commission as a matter of, or under the Open Meetings Act to take the settlement agreement, uh, for cons- uh, under consideration either today or tomorrow.
Uh, all right, any, uh, any, any attorneys or commissioners want to comment or respond to that?
Madam Chair, I guess I would ask Mr. Sanchez, if, if there's not an exception or some, uh, for, for adjudicatory matters for, uh, uh, where the commission is acting on that idea, that's why there's a judicial, uh, where, uh, a matter can be settled, uh, without, without being given notice of the settlement.
I don't think the Open Meetings Act provides for that kind of an exception. Uh, if you're thinking of the exception to a open meeting, which is, uh, adjudicatory matters, that only begs the question of whether, when this matter is next put on the agenda, there should be, uh, the agenda should include, uh, notice that, uh, commission will potentially go into closed session under exception H three of the Open Meetings Act.
I guess, Mr. Mr. Sanchez, just, I don't know if you have the, the act in front of you, but I'm looking at, um, the part H of ten dash fifteen dash one, uh, subparagraph three. I understand that the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, that, um, do not apply, as I understand it, to, uh, excuse me, deliberations in connection with an issue of adjudicatory proceeding. So I, I just, I'm not, I'm not, I haven't studied carefully, but it seems to me there may be an exception, uh, where, where the matter is adjudicatory nature, the parties are, um, no, no other party is in appearance.
No, that's an exception to the commission hearing the matter in open session, not an exception to properly noticing it on an agenda.
All right, well, uh, I, I always prefer to, uh, be conservative when I'm dealing with the Open Meetings Act and make every attempt at transparency and giving notice to members of the public. In, in practical fact, it really seems to me that any member of the public that would be interested in this matter's public hearing would have gotten notice and thus be interested in its settlement document. Hard for me to imagine there's someone that would claim that they only care about the settlement agreement. They didn't really care about the public meeting. But in, in an abundance of caution and, and especially hearing caution from prior commission members who have served longer than I, I, I do think it's probably the, the better practice for us to, uh, put this on our October agenda for review. And hopefully we will get that written, signed settlement agreement before the end of the week. Actually, you know, by end of Thursday would be great so that staff could get it posted on the website Friday so that members of the public would have thirty days' notice before our October thirteenth meeting. Um, and, uh, but I will certainly, uh, agree to, um, postpone today's hearing, tomorrow's hearing, not make anyone go through the hearing. And I'm, I'm thrilled there, there is settlement in this matter. That saves everybody a lot of time and energy and I appreciate the parties working together to reach that settlement. Um, any comments or questions or do I need a motion on this? I, I will say, uh, Mr. Sanchez, the party's found a, a proposed order postponing the hearing. We'd like you to take a look at that and edit it for me to sign. I, I, there's some things I think you and I are going to want to edit in there a little bit. Um, but, uh, that'll take care of postponing, that will take care of the scheduled hearing. But in terms of, uh, is there any other act, do, do I need the commission to vote on that today?
Madam Chair, is there a, a motion to tell the commission to continue the hearing? Uh, yes, I think the commission should vote on whether to grant that motion.
All right, so the party filed a motion to continue. Does the commission have any other discussion or comments on it? Or does the commissioner want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, Gabriel Wade, I would move that we continue today's scheduled hearing and place it on the October thirteenth docket.
Uh, put the hearing on the October docket or put discussion of the settlement on the October docket?
Yes, to be clear, the discussion of the settlement. Uh, so continue today's hearing and review the settlement agreement on the thirteenth.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. On the second?
Mr. You, Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Thompson. I second our motion.
Any discussion from any commissioners? Hearing none. Ms. Jones, why don't you go ahead and read the roll for our voting, please?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Tindleria.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirtan.
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams.
Yes.
Commissioner Musserafi.
Yes.
Commissioner Patton.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Cypher. Commissioner Cypher? Okay, moving on. Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons? Commissioner Timmons? Commissioner Wade? I think I heard, Mr. Wade, your, your vote again, please?
Yes.
Okay, um, Commissioner Cypher?
Yes, I was hitting open buttons and they wouldn't go.
Okay. Next, Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
All right. Madam Chair Pruitt?
Yes.
You have a vote and the affirmative from everyone.
Very good, thank you. Well, I believe that is, uh, the conclusion of our meeting. I do want to let, remind commissioners, because I don't think all of you have heard this from me, but, uh, because we had such a long and extensive agenda originally planned over today and tomorrow, a couple of commissioners reached out to me to mention that they were going to have to miss an hour or so of tomorrow's meeting. And after consultation with counsel and, um, uh, looking at the rules, um, I, I need to let you know that if we have a public hearing on our schedule, if you cannot attend the entire public hearing and hear the present, uh, presentation of all of the evidence, you would not be able to vote on the matter. So while we can be somewhat informal about that in our regular commission meeting, uh, we can participate in one matter and not in another, we do try to keep a full quorum and as many commissioners present, uh, throughout the meeting as we can. For a public hearing on an adjudicatory or a role-making matter, really do have to be present for all of the evidence if you're going to vote on the matter. And maybe because a lot of meeting, a couple of meetings have been canceled or, um, people did not realize exactly how long this meeting was likely to go on, uh, there, there were a few conflicts that came up. But I just want to make sure going forward that everybody understands the expectation and the requirements, uh, in order to vote on a meeting. Because, boy, I've been on a jury where I turned out to be an alternate and didn't get to vote and it was very frustrating. So, uh, with that note, thank you all, uh, for joining us today. I'm going to adjourn us now at three thirty-nine, three forty P M. And hope to see many of you next month. Thank you.
Thank you.